Do I have a motion to reconvene to regular meeting?
So moved.
Second. Right, it's been moved by Dr. Shaw and second by Ms. Johnson. Rope hall.
Jamal Rogers?
Here.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Johnson?
Here.
Yes. Everyone stand for the Pledge Allegiance. Mr. Marty Borzma, if you can lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have resolutions. Mr. Greenham.
Thank you and good evening. Would Bianca Ritchie please come to the front? Is Bianca here? This resolution is recognizing the accomplishments of the recipient of the National African American Recognition Award from the College Board, whereas Lockport Township High School student Bianca Ritchie received the National African American Recognition Award from the College Board as a result of her grade point average of 3.5 or higher and outstanding performance on the PSAT, NMSQT, PSAT-10, and/or AP exams. And whereas Bianca Ritchie has brought honor and distinction to herself, her family, school, and community by achieving this respected status. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that this resolution was adopted on this 18th day of September 2023. Congratulations Bianca. This next resolution is recognizing the accomplishments of the recipients of the National Hispanic Recognition Award from the College Board, whereas Lockport Township High School students Aiden Preciado, Aiden Mercado, Federico Laguna, Caitlin Munus, Liliana Fermanek, Samuel Alvarado, Sofia Reyes, and Valerie Martinez received the National Hispanic Recognition Award from the College Board as a result of their grade point average of 3.5 or higher and outstanding performance on the PSAT, NMSQT, PSAT-10, and/or AP exams. And whereas Aiden Preciado, Aiden Mercado, Federico Laguna, Caitlin Munus, Liliana Fermanek, Samuel Alvarado, Sofia Reyes, and Valerie Martinez have brought honor and distinction to themselves, their family, school, and community by achieving this respected status. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that this resolution be adopted on this 18th day of September 2023. Congratulations to our students. One more resolution this evening. Tonight we recognize the efforts and academic achievement of 216 Lockport Township High School students. Their performance within the Advanced Placement Program has resulted in their recognition as AP Scholars, AP Scholars with Honor, and AP Scholars with Distinction by the College Board. Awards are given to high school students who have demonstrated college-level achievement through AP courses and exams. To receive AP Scholar recognition, a student must receive a score of three or higher on three or more Advanced Placement exams. The College Board recognizes students as Advanced Placement Scholar, granted to students who receive scores of three or higher on three or more AP exams. Advanced Placement Scholar with Honor, granted to students who receive an average score of at least 3.25 on all AP exams taken, and scores of three or higher on four or more of these exams. And Advanced Placement Scholar with Distinction, granted to students who receive an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken, and scores of three or higher on five or more of these exams. To begin, we have the students who earned Advanced Placement Scholar status. Fayaz Abdel-Juwad. Maj Awad. Jacob Belitovich. Camille Banka. Timothy Bennett. Michael Byers. Heather Canny. Maya Chudova. Madison Siacha. Victoria Delpante. Jory Davidson. Quinn Dosin. Ian Ellsworth. Isabel Fudala. Grace Gad. Matthew Habada. David Kriziac. Joshua Lake. Megan Mack. Andy Maka. Jackson Maloney. Frank Marquette. McKenna Orico. Chelsea Ose. Micah Pori. Delaney Riley. Wazira Shakoni. Wazira Shikoni. Elizabeth Suerth. Thomas Suab. The following students earned AP Scholar Award with Honor. Peyton Albert. James Byers. Luke Sebula. Michael Durkess. Bryce Flood. Madison Lynch. Connor Marshall. Logan Mertens Smigelski. Noah Pejo. Nathan Pauly. And the following students have earned AP Scholar Award with Distinction. Ashley Andruck. Elizabeth Hanos. Sophia Reyes. How about one last big round of applause for all of our students? We are very proud of all of our students. We thank our parents and guests who came this evening. At this time, parents and guests of our honored students, please go to the Veterans foyer for, to meet your student and take some pictures if you would like. Thank you very much.[906.62][906.62](applause)
So moved.
Then I can second that. Alright, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and seconded by Ms. Lopez Cuniva. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Okay. Oh, you are? Okay. Okay. I'll try it. Okay. Can you hear me down there? Can you hear me down here?
I can hear you.
Okay. Can you hear me? Alright, do I have a motion to open the budget hearing for the fiscal year 2023-2024?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and seconded by Ms. Simone Rogers. Roll call.
Borzma?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Travis?
Yeah.
Simone Rogers?
Yes.
Lopez Cuniva?
Yes.
Alright, at each regular open meeting, members of the public and district employees may address the school board during the public comments section of the agenda. Individuals appearing before the board are expected to respectfully follow the guidelines of Policy 2:230 and Policy 830, available upon sign-in. Public comments are important to the board, however, it is customary not to respond on issues until time has been gathered to gather information and discuss all options. Lack of action or response at the time of a comment does not imply lack of interest in the issues brought to the board. And first we have a Mr. Jay Rhodey. And, Mr. Rhodey, before you begin, I'd like to congratulate you for your daughter.
Thank you, Ann. I appreciate it. She's a hard worker.
I know.
I want to talk to you guys, board, residents, parents, taxpayers. I want to talk about the budget, okay? Last year you guys levied 6.04%. You were at about $56 million to the taxpayers, but your annual budget last year was about $73.5 million. Now, 56 of that was roughly directly to the taxpayers. The rest of that money comes from federal grants, what have you, but I mean, let's be honest, it still is funded by the taxpayers. This year, you're asking for another $4, $4.5 million. From what I can see, it's going to bring us up to about 77.5 to maybe $78 million for your budget. And, you know, that's an increase of 5.86 or 96%. Now, just to keep in mind, Social Security, especially for seniors, is looking at a 3.2% increase this year. You guys are double that, what people are going to be getting as an increase, not to mention that the average worker in our country sees a cost of living increase historically between 1.5% and 3%. For the past two years, you guys have been double that. But, with that being said, when we look at the line items on the budget, we're going to see that we've got about $4.5 million for capital projects. Now, I know you have a big roof job coming on. In fact, at your June 2022 meeting, you guys spoke about how you've been saving for this project for well over 20 years, and not to worry, but the money was there. So, the question is, what's the major capital improvement that warrants another $4 million? Hadn't we already paid for that roof that's coming up? And if that's the case, well, if that $4.5 million is of capital projects, then maybe we can bring this possible levy back down to what the levy was last year, actually give the taxpayers a break, because what will happen is that line item should already be saved. Now, I'm sure, and I know you guys are responsible, Bob, I've talked to you numerous times, I'm sure the money you have budgeted for the job just didn't, poof, disappear. I'm sure it's still here. With that meaning, you can give the taxpayers a break this year, actually give them a decrease by just keeping the budget the same. Now, we tried this, and we tried to talk to you guys back in November or December of last year, when you actually approved the levy. But the problem was is that you would describe to the board members at the time, Bob, that, "Well, you guys approved the budget in September, and now we're stuck with that, so now we need the levy." Well, it's September this year. So this budget now determines, board members, what you're going to levy in December as a percentage. So now, we're in front with the horse of the cart, so to say. So now we're at the point, meaning that we can change it. You're not stuck to anything. Why don't we start doing the taxpayers a solid, and the best part about this is that if it's for capital projects and you already have the money, nothing will lose money. Everything else in the school is funded, okay? So please, please, board members, think about it, talk about it, and if you don't understand how the levy is derived, that's even more reason for you to put a hold on it till you understand it, because that's your fiduciary responsibility as a board member. Thank you for your time. God bless.[1286.23][1286.23](applause)
Next we have Ms. Angel Sheikh.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, parents, taxpayers, board. Today, I am going to be a little redundant, but I think it bears repeating. I'm standing before you to discuss the budget and the significant opportunity it presents to benefit the taxpayers without impacting the programs and services proposed in the budget. As I've carefully reviewed the budget and the corresponding revenue, including taxes, I want to emphasize that we can achieve savings without any cuts or reductions in the vital programs. Consider the roof replacement project, which Mr. Rhodey just discussed. It was funded over the past two decades. While it is included in the budget, we don't need to collect additional funds for it this year. By removing this project from the expenditures, we reveal a substantial operating surplus within that budget. Here's the exciting part: We can actually easily reduce the budgeted levy by $4 million with minimal impact on the district's financial stability. Ask yourself, if we started the year with $77 million in cash at June 30, is a 5% reduction to $73 million really a financial crisis? If the district's projections necessitate the $4 million, it's only fair that they share these projections with the public and allow for transparency and informed decision-making. Over the past four years, since July 2019, our district has added $20 million to its cash reserves. That's a substantial amount of tax revenue that doesn't need to be extracted from the taxpayers. We receive no interest on those funds, just increased tax bills. In conclusion, we have the opportunity to reduce the levy by $4 million, resulting in lower tax bills for the taxpayers, while ensuring that students, staff, and vendors can maintain all the programs and spending they were expecting. Let's make this budget work for everyone: taxpayers, students, and our community as a whole. Thank you.[1425.12][1425.12](applause)
Next we have Ms. Tammy Hayes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tammy Hayes. I've been here many times before, as some of you may have remembered. It feels like just yesterday, when I was here in 2022, asking that we not vote for a tax levy, when we were looking at our nation with the highest inflation we've ever seen. Now, just to review, we've not had a reset of this inflation. We have not had a reset of our economy in this country. However, here we are again. It's 2023, we want another tax levy. So, we all know we just had a school board election. We all know school board elections are every couple of years. Fiscal responsibility is one of the key elements to a school board member. We need to keep our schools fiscally responsible, just like us taxpayers have to keep our budgets fiscally responsible. We do not make a budget, including this, or that, or a trip to Italy, and then go to our employers and ask them to fund our budget. So, it is my understanding that the tax levy that we're asking for again is very close to 6%. According to the 2022 audited financials, the district had over $22 million in actual surpluses for the years ending in 2021 and 2022, and yet the board approved a tax levy of $3.3 million to the tune of $56.9 million to the taxpayers. This spelled out means the district started this fiscal year with $77 million, something someone else had said. Since 2021, the line of provisions and contingencies in the LTHS budget has amounted to over $2 million, which has been used in the annual budget's total expenditures to help justify the annual tax levy. One of the reasons to maintain this cash levy over six months of expenditures is to address the unexpected. This line item should be set to zero, not used to create what some would eagerly call a slush fund for future unhampered spending. So what happens if this tax levy is reduced? Well, then I guess the district may spend a little more than it takes in this year. It is estimated months cash on hand per the budget will be less than 12 months. Now I ask you, how many taxpayers do you know that are sitting on 12 months of expenditures in the bank waiting to be spent? I bet you don't know very many, if any at all. It's wildly unrealistic to think that you could keep 12 full months of expenditures sitting in the bank. In closing, I want to point out that in Illinois, a school district's financial profile score that a district gets full credit for having six months of cash on hand. No points are given or taken away if the district is at 12 months, 11 months, therefore LTHS would suffer no consequences for being fiscally responsible. I'm asking you once again to not vote for a tax levy. Thank you.[1644.23][1644.23](applause)
Next we have a Mr. Brent Porfilio.
Thank you, board, for letting me speak. I would like to congratulate the National Recognition Award winners tonight and the AP Scholars tonight. What a fantastic job they've done. I'm here to talk about the budget. There's a lot of things that have been repeated, and I'm repeating them again. I looked at my tax bill before I drove to the meeting. 20% of my tax bill goes to 205. I pay a little over $2,000 a year to 205. So, the equalized assessed value of my property is going up 7.1% this year. I got an assessment letter in the mail about it about a month ago. Most of you also received that, so that means my tax bill is going to go up another $800, and my salary is not going up 7.1%. Not many people probably in this room have increases of 7.1% of their salary. Mr. Rhodey gave some numbers on it, and on the average, I think half of that...
Next, we have a Mr. Brent Porfilio.
Thank you, Board, for letting me speak. I would like to congratulate the National Recognition Award winners tonight and the AP Scholars tonight. What a fantastic job they've done. I'm here to talk about the budget. There's a lot of things that have been repeated, and I'm repeating them again. I looked at my tax bill before I drove to the meeting. 20% of my tax bill goes to 205. I pay a little over $2,000 a year to 205. So the equalized assessed value of my property is going up 7.1% this year. I got an assessment letter in the mail about it about a month ago. Most of you also received that. So that means my tax bill is going to go up another $800, and my salary is not going up 7.1%. Not many people probably in this room have increases of 7.1% of their salary. Mr. Rody gave some numbers on it. And on the average, I think half of that is a typical raise. So something that was mentioned previously at the last board meeting I was at was whether or not it's fiscally responsible to change the levy amount. What is fiscally responsible? To me, it's not spending more than you're bringing in when you're looking at a residential budget, like the one in your household. You're not going to spend more than you make. So I would think that the people that levy taxes would think about that the same way. Inflation is out of hand right now. And we're already strapped with a 7% increase in Homer Township. I don't know what it is in Lockport Township, but in Homer Township, 7.1%. It's ungodly to think that we have to pay for that, and there's another, what is this, 5.7% that the Board wants to inflict on us over and above that? That's not fiscally responsible from a taxpayer's viewpoint from someone that's in the district. There's four line items on the budget I wanted to talk about real quick. The first one was the roof. Obviously, this is a multimillion-dollar project. It is a substantially sized roof on this school. I've heard anywhere from $1 to $3 million for the cost. I think it might even be more than that. But that's a 20-year capital improvement. So like a couple of people mentioned, you've been saving up for that for a while. And I would think that's not a line item in the budget anymore, that that has been one of the reserve line items. So I'm hoping that that's not in the budget. If it is as a line item, if it was saved for already, it should be removed. Second item of the four is about revenue. So I think District 205 has around 4,000 students, I think. It's plus or minus. The student fees haven't gone up in 10 years. If the student fee structure followed the increases in taxes from the 205 Board, they would have nearly doubled in 10 years. How much money would that have generated? Probably a couple of million. Is that something that the district would look into? I mean, a simple $100 extra fee per year, you know, that's almost half a million dollars. That multiplies pretty quickly. The third item I want to discuss is about the operating surplus. I don't know if there's a minimum that you're supposed to have. I really don't know much about that. I'm not an accountant. But it's all over the place the last three or four years. It was as high as, I think, over $15 million in 2022. Last year, I think it was about $4 million. I mean, do we even need it? If all of the other budget line items are putting in a fudge factor, do we really need a surplus? The third item I'd like to talk about is the, I think it's line 6,000. It talks about provisions for contingencies. I think it's about $2 million every year that's put in that line item. I don't know what it's for. But is that something that can fluctuate?
You have 30 seconds.
Thank you. Is that something that can fluctuate? I don't even know that, whether or not it's possible. So those are the four items. Removing the roof line item if it's been saved already, looking at the operating surplus and reducing it, looking at additional revenue through student fees, and reducing the provision for contingencies. Thank you for listening.
Okay, I close the budget closing time at 7:40. Moving on to our reports, Student Government.
Hi, I'm Gianna Friere. I'm a junior, and we're here to give some updates on our homecoming plans. So I'm going to talk about Monday through Wednesday for our dress-up days, and then Aleem's going to talk about Thursday and Friday. So for Monday, we have a Barbie pink theme with the new Barbie movie. We have like a Barbie and Ken Day. For Tuesday, we have a Four Elements theme. So we have seniors going as fire, juniors as water, sophomores as earth, and freshmen as air. And then for Wednesday, we have a surfers versus bikers theme. Are there any questions about those days? Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Aleem Musini. I'm a junior. So Thursday, dress-up day. We're doing class colors. Freshmen are going to be green. Sophomores are going to be blue. Juniors are going to be gold. And then seniors are going to be maroon. Friday, we're doing portareware. So make sure you guys have your portareware. It's one of the best days out there. Everyone has, you know, portareware, and everyone's there to support. Any questions?
Hi, I'm Lola Rodriguez. I'm a senior. I'm talking about some of the activities we have planned for the week. So Tuesday is going to be our movie night, and we're showing grown-ups. And then Thursday is our variety show in the auditorium. And then Tuesday and Thursday, we also have class assemblies. Tuesday is going to be freshman versus sophomore in the morning, and then junior versus senior in the afternoon. And then Thursday is like our all-school pep rally for the day. Any questions? Thank you.
Hi, I'm McKenna O'Brien. I'm a junior. I'm talking about the after-school activities during homecoming week. On Tuesday, we have poster night, which consists of decorating the halls for the week. And then on Wednesday, we have powder puff. And then on Friday is the football game. Any questions?
Hi, I'm Josh Kane. I'm a junior. And I'll be talking about the community service hours and how that is recommended that students get all 40, because they could get a free homecoming ticket. Any questions?
Any questions from the Board? All right. Well, thank you so much for those updates. Thank you. And have fun.
Our homecoming theme is A Ticket Around the World.
I saw the posters. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, yes, AFT report.
Hi, everyone. I'm Katie Kishline, the Union President for the District. As the students alluded, we are moving, we're in Week 6 already, excited for homecoming, which is a longstanding tradition here at Lockport. But I wouldn't be here doing my job if I didn't say that that week doesn't happen here without our sponsors and our coaches and our maintenance staff, who, when the doors close, we wake up and it's just cleaned and ready to go. So it's important to remember that. As we honored all those students here tonight, all of those exams don't happen by themselves either. We have three wonderful AP coordinators who make that happen, along with our Assistant Principal Jen, who, you know, find locations and get everyone registered and hash that out. So kudos to everyone who makes everything happen. Also, we're a couple of weeks away from parent-teacher conferences. Excited for a new format with that. Being able to connect with more families is always a good, positive thing. So looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, ISBE report. Ms. Johnson, do you have anything?
Nothing new.
Probably the only thing I might add is I participated last Thursday on an ISBE, excuse me, focus group, where they were meeting across the state with, just online, with superintendents and Board of Education members. ISBE is thinking of introducing a workshop that is a strategic planning workshop. So they ran that, their process by us, which I would just summarize by saying it's a shorter process than most strategic planning, fewer meetings, a little bit more focused, more focused on outcomes that a district would like to see. So it was interesting. We gave feedback. We'll see, they hope by next year that they have that workshop ready for Boards of Education in the state.
So Dr. Membra, this is a future ISAB workshop?
Yeah, it's a future, much like they offer right now the self-evaluation. They offer the getting started right for boards that have new board members on. They would offer a strategic planning offering that takes a board and other stakeholders through strategic planning for the district. Most strategic planning are very long processes, you know, about 10 to 15 meetings a year involving large groups of people. What ISBE is proposing is a shorter, tighter process that's really focused on results that boards want to see in the district.
Thank you. All right, Foundation Report.
Good evening. Mostly, the foundation is focused on our upcoming event this Saturday, The Taste of Lockport. We've had 10 different community businesses come out to sponsor the events. We're very excited. We have 12 vendors that will be there selling food and beverage. And we're excited to have Maggie Speaks and Friday at 5 come and play. It's our, yeah, last year, this was our largest fundraiser, where we raised the most money for the scholarships and other events that we're hosting. So we are hopeful that this year is even more successful. If the weather holds out, I think we're in for a great night in downtown Lockport. Another thing that the foundation has that's newer is that we have an opening for a board member. So if anyone is interested in joining the School of Foundation, it's a board of 15 people. We now currently only have 14. So we'd be seeking applications if anyone is interested in becoming a part of the foundation and supporting the school in that way. So that's about it. And then we are moving forward with The Taste of, we are moving forward with the Nutcracker Ballet that will come to our auditorium this December. And that's for the community. It's not, it's, I mean, obviously, students can come, but the focus is, of course, community events.
When is the Nutcracker?
It's going to be December 8, 9, and 10. Yeah, tickets will likely go on sale probably either towards the end of October. Oh, great. Thank you.
Wait, I have a quick question. So what are the requirements needed to be a Foundation Board Member?
So there aren't true requirements. There's an application process, and then they, the, you know, generally, what people have done is they fill out the application. I have a conversation with them. They come to a board meeting, so they understand what they're kind of signing up for. The way that the board is laid out is there's three-year commitments, and then they can renew for a total, for twice, so you can be there for six years. That's where they have it currently. The person that has left is kind of in the middle of the third year. So they kind of see that year out, and then they'd be able to renew that position. Just someone that's willing to support the school with their time and their energy. That's what we're looking for.
Thank you. All right, Legislative Report.
Legislative Report. Well, this is the time of year where there is not that much going on in Springfield in terms of voting or bills. That's usually introduced in the spring session. We're heading into what's called the veto session, and the veto session is the period of time, be late October, early November, where the legislator can override gubernatorial vetoes. One interesting veto is the kosher and halal meal selections. That was signed by the House and the Senate, requiring all schools in the state of Illinois to offer kosher and halal meal selections. The governor vetoed that. And vetoed it because some of the state providers in food service can't meet that. And also, the governor vetoed it to give Boards of Education more local control over whether that's something needed or necessary in the diet and the menu that they provide in food service. So stay tuned. That's one that we believe might be, the legislator might override the governor on that. Just some other issues of interest for us. ISBE, and the end of June 2024, the SAT contract with the College Board to be our state accountability test will end. And in past years, that's been renewed with the SAT. This year, new State Superintendent Tony Sanders is going to do a request for proposals. So we're likely going to see a number of test makers, ACT, SAT, probably others, who will put in proposals to compete for that contract for, this is the high school level, not the K through 8 level for accountability testing. This doesn't affect our high school district, but there is proposed legislation moving its way to end in the state of Illinois, schools as polling places during elections, primarily for safety, just for the control. Right now, when schools are polling places, it's not manageable to have everyone who comes and votes check in with security and run the check that we do and most schools do. So typically, schools close down. And so just taking schools off as polling places entirely is something that's making its way through the legislation. Also, something that we're following, this is a legislative commission, that's the Illinois Higher Learning Commission, is proposing a rule change, and this relates to dual credit with our community colleges in the state. And we're at a place where dual credit is almost at the same amount of enrollment as advanced placement, like the scholars you saw today. In essence, the rule change would allow each community college to set the qualifications for teachers in terms of what a teacher has to have as an educational background in order to teach dual credit. We oppose this. We actually believe there should be a statewide certification. To give you an example, Juliet Junior College could require anyone teaching a dual-credit class to have a master's plus 40 in a subject area. Whereas College DuPage down the road might say, you just have to have a master's. Whereas Wabashi Community College could say you could have a bachelor's plus 25 hours of experience. So it creates, for us, we believe, an equity issue and also could ultimately make it more difficult for us to find staff that could meet those requirements, teach that dual credit, get students college credits even before they leave. So we're just watching that. We would advocate, like I said, for one consistent statewide certification that qualifies you to teach dual credit. Any questions? Yeah, Ms. Johnson.
The, can you hear me?
I can.
The SAT?
Yeah.
Is the ISBE going to do a thorough evaluation for the SAT? Because in the years that it's been there, it doesn't seem to have been successful, but school-wide. They changed all the rules. Then every year when it came out, they didn't publish it. They, in some cases, they adjusted the numbers. So there was a lot of issues with it. So are they going to, are they saying that they're going to do an evaluation?
You know, I think they'll have, everyone who bids will have to go through, just like, you know, when we bid things, a bid specification and what they put in those bid specifications, what they want them to do. You know, we complain that we don't get the results in a timely way. The results aren't released until October 31, which I always think is interesting, you know, on Halloween, trick or treat. So that's a real delay. There's not much we can do with that data once we've already started a school year. So we always feel like we're behind. I think, Ms. Johnson, the biggest question is going to be if the state is going to continue to use a college entrance exam. So that's an entrance exam that deliberately built into that state as a matter of an assessment, will always have a high and will always have a low. It's what's called a norm reference test. It always will seek to separate out students from a high to a low because it would have no value to colleges if it didn't, if it didn't do that. As opposed to a criterion reference test, which would test what schools are actually mandated to teach. So as you know, we have a whole list of mandated areas of study. But if you took that list of mandated areas of study and you compared that to the SAT, you're not going to explicitly see on the SAT, or the ACT for that matter, those areas of study. You'll see skills that we should be teaching, mathematical skills, reading skills, writing skills. But you won't see an alignment with the actual units of study that were required. So I think the state will be looking at norm reference tests, like college entrance exams, and also looking at criterion reference tests to make its mind up what kind of test does it want to use to hold schools and students accountable.
Are they going to have hearings, or you don't know?
That I do not know. Usually, when they do have a request for proposals, they do have hearings downstate. It's a very large and lucrative contract.
Can you keep me informed?
I will keep you informed. We're very interested.
Oh, okay. All right, okay.
That's my report.
All right, thank you. All right, there is no comment follow-up from the August 21st, 2023 Board of Meeting. All right, we're moving next to public comments. At each regular open meeting, members of the public and district employees may address the school board during the public comment section of the agenda. Individuals appearing before the board are expected to respectfully follow the guidelines of Policy 2:230 and Policy 830 available upon sign-in. Public comments are important to the board. However, it is customary not to respond on issues until time has been taken, taken, time has been taken to gather information and discuss all options. Lack of action or response at the time of comment does not imply lack of interest in the issues brought to the board. And we have one, Ms. Shandiranda.
Good evening, board members, community members, staff, faculty. I'm here tonight to talk to you about the renovation on Central Campus. I've had the opportunity to sit on the camp-
Excuse me, can you speak into mics?
Yes. I've had the opportunity to sit on the committee for a year now. During that time, we've met with students, we've met with faculty, we've had the opportunity toward this building along with other buildings. As you notice, we walked in this building to the left, but we didn't come in the main entrance. If you had accessibility issues, you would not be able to walk in our main entrance. We are not ADA compliant, and that's something that we need to move for. This building was built in 1909. It had renovations in 1930 and 1953. It's been 70 years since we've done a major renovation. A renovation is something that focuses on restoring something old into good repair. It's time that we do that for this building. When you look at our mission, we talk about promoting partnership with students, parents, businesses, and community. Utilize effective teaching methods and current technology. Provide quality, comprehensive academic career and extracurricular experiences. If you were to walk this building now, you would see it's obvious that there's many gaps that we've had, many opportunities. We know that not all students, although we celebrated so many AP scholars tonight, will go on to colleges. They may go on to other career choices. We don't have that opportunity in this building to offer those classes to them. That would be nice to change that and give them those opportunities. When we talk about a renovation, we talk about improving physical and safety conditions, enhancing the educational environment, providing updated technological, sorry, infrastructure, increase accessibility of facilities for disability access. Tonight, there's a young lady that I cherish, who's in the hospital, who's not come here to speak. She's a freshman in this building. She's not given the same opportunities as other students to move around this building based on the way it's currently built. We have ramps that do not allow her wheelchair to move properly. We need to do better for all of our students and give them all those opportunities. I ask that you seriously consider the renovation that would be brought by these architectures this evening. Thank you.
All right, we have no communications, and we have those, the Freedom of Information requests, we had five of those. Okay, we'll be moving into our approval items. Do I have a motion to approve the open session meeting minutes from the August 21st, 2023 regular board meeting?
So moved.
And I can second that. All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw, and second by Ms. Lopez. Can you, well, any questions? No? All right, roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Borisma?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Simone Rogers?
Yes.
Travis?
Yeah.
Lopez, can you?
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the closed session meeting minutes from the August 21st, 2023 regular board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Dr. Simone Rogers. Any questions? Roll call.
Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
Yeah.
Borisma?
Yes.
Simone Rogers?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez, can you?
Yes.
Okay, moving on then to, we have no board member expenses. All right, moving on to our treasurer's report.
Stephanie Croy. Good evening, board, members of the community. Treasurer's report, as always, lists all of our normal expenses. You'll see that the updated proposed budget is also updated in the financial reports, if you take a look at those. So you'll see the comparison to what the updated recommendation is. You'll also see a couple of other items that are required in this month. Annually, as part of the collective bargaining agreement, the union representatives provide us, the district payroll office specifically, a certification that tells us what to withhold for union dues. That is in here, just notification. The other piece is Public Act 97259 is a specific salary rec, I don't know what word I'm looking for.
Reporting.
Reporting, that's the word I'm looking for, thank you. I wanted to say like disclosure, but it's the same thing. Annually, that's a requirement that we have to do, the salary and compensation report through the EIS system, it is through the state for the administrators and teachers, and then we also have to tack on to that report any IMRF employees that have salary and benefits packages of greater than $75,000, so that is also in there. This report has to be, you know, presented to the board at the same time as the budget, and then it'll have to be after this, the budget approval tonight. That report has to be on our website, so that will be updated. We keep the current report of that on our website all the time. There's also, as we've taken to letting the board know what's upcoming, you know, we've got annually, Mr. Thompson's office applies for the school maintenance grant, and that is one of the only grants that the board actually has to approve the application. So he will be bringing that to the board when that is ready for approval. And we, as we know, we have DLA, our architects here to talk about the central renovation project and upcoming, whether it's October or November, but it's coming up. The board will have to make a decision on what to do with that renovation project. And then the tax levy tentatively will be approved in November, and affirmatively approved, finally approved in December. And then towards the end of the year, I actually put some future things out here because if the board does approve a renovation project and the voters approve it as well, the budget would need to be amended for that project to start as well because there's, it's likely that we would be spending things this year from that, and it would affect the tax levy, things like that. So are there any questions about any of the standard reports in the treasurer's report?
I do have one question.
Yep.
So you're saying if we approve the draft tonight?
Uh huh, of the budget.
Right.
Well, actually, what you're approving tonight is the final budget. You've approved the tentative budget in July.
Right, so that could all change if, if the, if we approve the renovation for the school.
Well, what would happen is, so the law requires, sorry, I'm not gonna be able to look at you while I speak, I'm too short, I apologize for that.
I can't see you either.
The, the law requires us to, the board, to amend the budget if there's a big, greater than 10% change in something. So if we were to approve a large renovation project, and then the voters approved the funding for that project, that affects the tax levy by a significant amount, right? That would affect, it would affect bond issuance, it would affect those kinds of things. So we would have to put those things in there to issue bonds, to start spending money, to build, to do architectural plans, all that kind of stuff. And likely, we would start that before June 30th if it's approved in March. So that would mean that's a bigger than 10% change in our budget, and the board would have to approve that change. So we would have to go through the same process, tentatively approve a budget, amendment in April, and a final in June.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, it's not a process that we do all the time, you know, there isn't an amendment process all the time. Some school districts actually do. They amend their budget every year so that things kind of line up at the end of the year. But we have not traditionally done that here. We only amend when there truly is a big something, you know, unexpected that's larger than 10%, so that we can, and that's the only time we've done that. There's a few times since I've been here.
All right, any questions?
Any other questions?
And we would, you know, we have Miss Croy at the podium right now. We've got, under my report, our friends from DLA. We would customarily discuss the budget when it's a little bit further down in the agenda. So we would customarily discuss it under the approval item, and I would really suggest, and we've had some input from some public comment, there's a number of things to discuss about that, your question, Mr. Borisma. So I would, you know, recommend that you have a discussion and maybe decide, is now the time, or we'll have Mrs. Croy back at the podium for the approval item. That's usually where we discuss it, but, you know, just want to make sure that, you know, the evening doesn't end where, where we don't kind of work through the budget process, what that means, what that is, and then what it means to, to enter the next phase of this. It would usually be in the approval item, which is just down, down the budget, but...
So right now, we're just approving the treasurer's report, not the budget. It's a clarification for everyone.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the August 2023 treasurer's report?
So moved.
And I can second that. Right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Ms. Lopez Caneva. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yeah.
Borisma?
Yes.
Simone Rogers?
Yes.
Lopez, can you?
Yes.
All right, superintendent report.
All right, I want to get right to really the main event this evening, but I also have to echo what Katie Kishline shared. You know, just on two accounts, we did a tour of Central tonight, and it was an opportunity just to highlight our maintenance and custodial workers in action. And, you know, the, the building might be aged, and obviously, we met and we're meeting here because this is a building and a space that, that we're considering, and it's a nice reference point to be actually in the building, but it was nice on the tour to see human beings who've worked very hard to keep this building clean and in shape. As Katie Kishline said, none of that just happens by itself. And then also, I do want to acknowledge our staff, our administrators. You know, the students you saw tonight, those are sort of the top 1% in the country type of awards, to be an AP scholar at any level, to be a National Merit Scholar means you're in the top 1% of 1%. And that doesn't happen without families, students, teachers, all AP coordinators, your support, you know, our EOS workshop, I walk through the way that the board supports advanced placement with the College Board, so just a huge amount of gratitude towards that. But without further ado, I'm gonna ask my colleagues from DLA to come up. I want to provide just a little bit of a summary as they get set, and I open up their PowerPoint that they presented to us. What I did is, in the, in the budget, I, I kind of gave the board a little bit of a sense of the, how the district has tried to approach a central, no pun intended, facilities issue. And this building has been about a 25 or 20-year facility issue. About 20 years ago, there was a recognition that 100 and some-year-old building, now 114-year-old building, if it's going to operate as a school, has needs. Any 114-year-old structure is going to have needs. And the central question before, I think, everybody in this room is, do we want this building to continue as a school? And if the answer to that is yes, then there is work to do on this building that deferring it has a cost, has a risk, but also, even more exciting, there are opportunities. And I think really, we're here tonight to talk about opportunities. In the past, the sort of timeline that it provided is in 2006, 2007, 2008, 2008, 2009, and 2011, the district strategy was to offer new construction to the community, 471,000 square foot building roughly, that would cost, at that time, about $141 million. As you'll hear from our architects, in today's dollars, a brand-new high school building would cost somewhere between $180 million and $200 million, about double the cost of renovating this building. The voters rejected that. They rejected the idea of building a brand-new building at our property at 1459th and Cedar Road. So Central is still with us, it's still here, putting about a half million to a million dollars into this, into this building. So after a demographic report, after a citizens committee, after about 350 people coming through from, for tours, workshops over the summer, a tour this evening, what we're really considering is, can we solve that problem by renovating and preserving this building? And that's really what's before the board. Strategically, can we do that? So I'm gonna turn it over to, to DLA, and I'm gonna pull this up, Eric, and let you, and I apologize, I hope it's not too dated, but this is what we loaded up for our viewers at home.
Okay.
So I hope I'm not missing, missing something for you, and you just tell me when to advance.
All right, we'll do our best with that, thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's great to, to be here, and it's actually an honor to be a partner with District 205 in going through this process, so grateful to be here, thank you. Good to see everyone. Tonight, we were, we're here to give you an update. As Dr. McBride had mentioned, we had gone through a pretty lengthy process to take a look at this Central Campus and to see if it's a viable facility to be able to renovate and turn it into a progressive, future-ready learning center for the freshman students that are going through this school. So that's our main purpose here, is to give you a summary of that and to give you some of the solutions that we've come up with. Definitely, we're still in the very conceptual stages of everything. So what you're seeing here tonight is just some of the data that we've gathered through this lengthy process, and then also some of the solutions. My name is Eric Sickbert. From some of you that don't know me, I know the board is, we've been with the district for quite a length of time, and some of you board members do know us as DLA, and, but some of you don't. So I'm going to take a little bit of time to give you a little update of who DLA Architects is, so it gives you some background of who we are. Again, my name is Eric Sickbert. I'm a principal at DLA Architects. I'm a principal in charge, basically, of this district and have been for probably longer than some of you have been alive, but I've been here for quite a long time. And then with me is, we have Rich Kozick. He is a designer, that is part of the process, and then Peter Pontorelli. He is the architect that has been involved with this process. Both of these gentlemen are architects, licensed architects, as well as myself. Actually, it's really pretty cool, we got Rich Kozick, he's actually alumni of Lockport School District. So we're very happy to have him on board, and he has done, done several projects throughout the years for the district. I'm sure you're proud of him. We certainly are, and grateful that he's with us here at DLA Architects. So that's a little bit about the people. I'm gonna spend a little bit of time on the company. Again, you might not know who DLA Architects is, are. We are educational architects. We've been in the business right now, we're on, it's about celebrating our 40th year anniversary, dealing with educational architecture. We have, that's pretty much what we do. About 90% of our work is educational architect, architecture, and as you can see on the screen, on the, on the audience's left side, on, left side of the screen, those are all the clients that we have within the Chicagoland district. That's pretty much our client base, is the Chicagoland area. We don't feel like we want to get too national because then you start watering down your expertise and your knowledge. What we are really, by doing this, we're very accomplished in this area. We know how things work within this area, and again, we've been doing it for 40 years. So we're, we're really well-versed in the educational market in this area. On the right side of the screen, as you can see there, you can see some of the recognition that we've received from our peers, and, and this isn't necessary, this is actually a, a national magazine that does an architectural award every year, and on this particular year, we actually had three high honors with the projects that we submitted. So we're, I, I have to say, we're very good at what we do. And we don't do, we don't go after projects that allow us to be able to have these awards. We go after projects to have, build relationships with our clients, with Lockport School District 205, and I think that's obviously represented in the relationship that we've had with you. We'll do roofs, we'll do parking lots, we'll do boiler replacements, we'll do anything and anything, anything and everything that the district would, needs an architectural service to do, we're there for you, and that's been our motto, and that's kind of how we go about doing our business, and it has been incredibly successful for us. One of our primary and root philosophies of our company that keeps us going, and I One of our primary and root philosophies of our company that keeps us going and I think makes us very successful with our relationships with our clients is our philosophy is form follows learning. And with any relationship, it's important that you have two people listening to each other and the architect, we, again, we, our primary purpose here is first to come and listen and hear what the needs and the wants of the district are. And then we create a, a, come from all that imagery and all that, those ideas, we create the actual physical drawings and create the dreams and hopes and wants into reality. So we, our form follows learning is our motto, is our, what we say, and that basically is saying we, our form will follow whatever you need based off what we've heard you say you need and want. So that's kind of who we are in a quick statement of that. So we'll move on a little bit from that. Thank you for the time with that. Another thing that, with the history that we have with the district, what that brings and the power of that is the fact that we know your facilities incredibly well. Central Campus, we have been involved with it for the 20-some years that we've been here. We've been walked through, we've done the assessment reports, numerous assessment reports, a number of life safety surveys of the facilities. We know it top to bottom, we know all its beauty, beautifications of what it's really cool about it and the uniqueness of it, and we know some of the challenges of it and know how to address those. Also, we know the community, we know the board and the fact of, you know, the beauty and the majesty of the building and the history that it has with the community. It is a bonding element to the community and we understand that and we don't, as architects, we don't want to disturb that and we want to try to preserve that as we move forward with whatever renovations that we're trying to do here. And that is our charge, is what the district has charged us to do, is take a look at Central Campus and how can we make it a viable building to teach the current students, but also the students in the, in the future, up to 20, 25 years from now. As was stated already by someone of the public, it, the building is incredibly old and not a lot of huge renovations have occurred within the building and there's a lot of work that could be done to make what you were doing here already, I mean, give kudos to the administration for all the accomplishments that they're able to do within a facility that they've been giving. But to improve that facility will incredibly enhance the students' opportunities and chances to be able to even do even better because of all the technologies that have changed and the teaching methods and the curriculum that have changed in the last 100 years is pretty incredible. So to take a look at Central, how can we make that into a building that fits today's curriculum, today's educational methods, was our target. And so we have gone through that process. We did a facilities assessment, that's taken a look at the core building itself, doesn't really make sense to spend a lot of money if the building really isn't worth it, are we going to, what are we going to do? Is it going to cost way too much money to renovate or can it even, the building stand? We've done that assessment, how much that might cost. We've also, as already been mentioned, we take, did a lot of workshops, we talked a lot to the staff, the community, the students, and to try to determine what the needs are for this school, to take a look at the curriculum. And now, that's what we're going to be presenting here tonight, is taking all the results of that and that process. We're not, definitely not going to talk to every minute of that, but we'll certainly give you a summary of all that we've gone through to get to where we are here tonight. Peter is going to be the one talking about the process and then Rich will be talking about some of the solutions. We also were charged to take a look at the efficiency of the building and can this even be a possibility? The amount of students that we have coming into the, to the building, is it going to be, is it efficient enough and is it being utilized to its full potential? And can we fit the amount of students into the building with the curriculum that we want to deliver within the facility? So we will give you some of that data as well. So with that, I'm going to, unless you have any questions, I'm going to move it on to Peter and he's going to talk about the process.
All right, awesome, thanks Eric. Okay, so. I'll just give you a thumbs up, Bob, when we're ready to slide.
Yeah, you got it. I'll just have that thumbs up will be fine.
Okay, so one of the first steps in our process is to engage stakeholders. You might be asking yourself, what is a stakeholder? So stakeholders are everyone that's involved in the life of this building and in the district. So we reached out to students, staff, community members, even some board members joined us. And through a series of workshops, community engagement and surveys, we were able to pool everyone together and go through a series of exercises to understand essentially the strengths and the challenges of the existing building, to hear right from the source of the people that use the building every day. And the primary goal was to understand, is the building limiting or supporting learning? And there's many different answers to that, there's many different opinions and it was great to engage with everyone and go through the whole process. This particular workshop we have up here, we had in the library here, there were many people involved and there were many different perspectives and opinions and it was very valuable for us to hear everyone's input and try to synthesize that into, you know, how can we make, you know, the best decisions moving forward? So essentially, we're trying to build the case and document the path for future improvements. Okay, so here's, here's some of the worksheets that we had, some large stickies that every group filled out and essentially we listed strengths, what needs improvement and what, what could be places of opportunity. So there were obviously many positives to the existing building, it has a rich and storied history, but there's also many challenges to face as well. And there's no one right answer, but we do start to see certain themes emerging. So as we ask a mix of, you know, we asked them some open-ended questions and even in Blue Sky, okay, what would, name your, your dream improvement, how would you change this building if you had, you know, unlimited power and you could do whatever you want? So we had a whole litany of responses and we tried to, on the next slide, we tried to synthesize what those challenges are. So as I mentioned, certain themes started to emerge, challenges and opportunities. So for us, some of the most important themes were small classrooms, dated classrooms that needed improvement. And this is actually a picture, the background image of this slide is a picture of one of the classrooms. So you've got a chalkboard, a window air conditioning unit, tile like you're seeing right here, that probably hasn't been changed in many, many years. Basically, the, these rooms need a refresh. They need ceilings, floors, HVAC, and some of the things that were mentioned, not only did we ask the groups to consider the functional aspect as, from a curriculum sense, but also in terms of the building function, you know, how about HVAC comfort? You know, should we add air conditioning to all of these spaces, et cetera, et cetera? So ADA accessibility was very high on the list, we already heard from, from one lady this evening, and we know it's a top priority for the district, so that's certainly on our list of challenges that we need to address. Departments being spread out, so one example would be science classrooms, so there's one classroom on the first floor and the rest of the department's on the third floor. And so how can we adjust that in the future to get some efficiency of having the department together? And then a whole host of other, other items here, elevator access, toilet rooms. I used the restroom this evening and it was in a stairwell, so that's not normal. So certainly, there's things to address in this building that have been carryovers from the last 100 years as the building has been added on to so many times. So to present solutions to address these challenges, we have to break them down into two different categories. One is infrastructure improvements and the other is general remodeling. So infrastructure improvements would be basically the shell and the functionality of the building. So windows, roofs, HVAC replacement, basically, essentially keeping all the rooms the same configuration that they're in now, but what is it going to take to, just as a baseline, keep this building running for the next 20 or 50 years? Certainly, there's a lot of improvements, we have to, most of the images that you're going to see tonight, aside from the inspiration images, are actual Lockport images. So on the left, infrastructure improvements, a great example would be replacing the district admin HVAC system. And on the right, it would be, this is kind of an action shot, so general remodeling would be physically changing the configuration of the space, right? Turn, making, turning classrooms into offices or offices into classrooms, something that involves more of a capital project, perhaps a general contractor or, you know, more involved remodeling than just changing windows or roof replacements and things of that nature. So on the right-hand side, if anyone's eagle-eyed, that's actually the coffee shop being remodeled, that's the shell of the coffee shop in East, so. So the infrastructure improvements that we have identified, some of the more pressing ones, code compliance from our life safety assessments from years past, bringing the building up to code, current code, any ADA, ADA accessibility improvements, adding a sprinkler system to the building and then replacing the HVAC and adding AC throughout the building, as well as a whole host of things I just mentioned, window replacement, roof replacement and masonry restoration. And the estimated budget for that, just the baseline improvements, if nothing, no physical space gets remodeled in here, we're estimating that that could be upwards of 40 to 45 million. Rich is going to talk a lot about general remodeling, what the, the projects that we have identified to address some of the needs in the building from a functional and curriculum standpoint. So we can keep the building running in its current configuration, but in order to maximize the capability of this building and give, you know, maximum access to students, there were a number of projects that need to happen in order to free up space, utilize space differently and give the best experience to the students here. So some of these general modeling line items are modernize all the classrooms, that was very important to touch, to try and touch every classroom in the building in some way, replacing floors, ceilings, painting, just giving it a refresh. And then a new student comments. So one, one thing we kept hearing in the surveys and workshops was that there's no, you know, student gathering space. So that was very important. How do we create a student comments in the building? And then as well as modernizing the cafeteria and getting the CCC and Academy space remodeled in, in the building and adding new student collaboration spaces throughout the building. So these general remodeling projects, you know, physically altering and doing a little bit more heavy remodeling, we're estimating that to be 55 to 70 million. And Rich is going to go over that in a second. But on the next slide, we put everything together and just to try and put some, some numbers in perspective, but again, these are very preliminary conceptual project budgets. If, if everything gets selected, the infrastructure improvements and the general remodeling, we're looking at a total of somewhere between 95 and 115 million. Obviously, now we were in a very preliminary phase, essentially just looking at different areas of the building, there's no concrete solution yet. However, we're going to keep refining and we'll talk about that at the end of the presentation, that this is just the beginning of the conversation and we were asked, can this building meet the functional and curriculum goals in its current state without building a new building or, you know, exploring other options? And I think the answer is yes and we'll, we'll go through all of our programming, but it's going to take some work in order to get the types of spaces that all of the survey and workshop respondents were, were asking for. And then to put something else in perspective, Bob did mention the previous referendum, so we've, we have the 2009, the last referendum construction budget was about 142 million. So if you adjust that for inflation in today's dollars, not quite comparing apples to apples because that was a brand-new school, but if you were looking at a brand-new school on a new site, you're looking at upwards of, of that $200 million number. So still more, definitely more feasible and potentially viable to remodel this building. So. All right, so the next step here in the process was what we call initial programming. That was essentially looking at the curriculum, the school's curriculum and the building as a whole. So basically, you'll see a little snapshot here. Yeah, there you go.
It's going to get a little heavy.
So this is basically a five-page document listing every single space in the building. So we really went through and analyzed every single room in the building, every class in the curriculum, every room, how it's being used, how big it is, and then looked at really what those, what those spaces should be, how big they should be, where they should be and things like that. And this is kind of our, you know, foundational document to really analyze the building and understand what we're, what we're working with and what the school needs. So then from there, we have a summary and basically what we found is, up in that top section is essentially the general kind of curriculum-based areas, classrooms, the main office guidance, toilet rooms, all the stuff that supports the typical day-to-day learning environments. And what we found was that the existing space is about 80,000 and really that needs to be about 97,000. So it's about a 17,000 square foot increase in those general learning spaces, the things that support the day-to-day learning. And then working with the administration and the staff, we kind of looked for spaces to use, to utilize, opportunity, space for opportunity to expand those programs and we kind of pinpointed a few areas, one of those being this auditorium space, basically this auditorium, the stage area, gets us about 10,000 square feet right there. So it's kind of underutilized in the building, you know, we're really tight as we'll see in the next slide, but there's not really any space to expand here, so turning this into something else is one of those steps. And then the rest is kind of some miscellaneous areas, locker rooms, underutilized locker rooms and some maintenance areas. So in working with the school, we did find about 18,000 square feet, so again, it's just a shift of program. If you look at that bottom line, it's really the same footprint, we're just looking at shifting the program inside the building to meet the academic needs. So then we'll jump into, kind of go through the plans here, we'll just keep this generalized. This is, we'll run through the existing, then we'll look at the new proposed plan. Again, this is very conceptual, just to really see how things will fit. Again, we're looking at the site plan here and as you know, it's, this building pretty much takes up a whole city block, there's not really any room to expand and that's really why we're focused on what we can do inside the building. You know, on three sides, it's right up against the street, there's not really, you know, physical land left. And then one thing to point out as well, on the south end of the site is the parking lot. So that's really the only main parking lot, the rest is on the street. So looking at that as a potential opportunity for public access as well, just something to think about as we move forward here. So now we'll just run through the plans here, everything is color-coded, I won't spend a ton of time on the existing here, but basically, just want to highlight a couple of things. This is the lower level, underneath here actually, the cafeteria down below, which is sort of a half level lower than the first floor. As you, anyone's walked the building, you've seen all the levels, so it is a bit complex. So this would be the cafeteria down below and then this is the first floor, which is from the front entrance, half a level down or from the south entrance here at grade. But on this plan, you can start to see the colors, the colors represent all the different departments. And this first floor especially, you see a rainbow of color, just kind of the catch-all where programs have spread throughout the years. So again, this is just the lower level and highlighting a variety of classrooms, as Eric mentioned before, here, the science classroom, this one lonely science classroom down on the first floor. One thing to point out as well, the yellow, there's, yellow is staff space and there's almost none of that in the building. So there's really no space for staff to collaborate at all or students, the multipurpose aspect. Moving up to the first floor, the main level, that's kind of where the main office is, that's all the pink area there up front, just arrange yourself, the left would be the main entrance and then down at the bottom, the south entrance, we came in here. And this is kind of your main public space level with the gym and the aux gym back here and then the auditorium that we're in now. So a lot of public space up on this second floor and then again, a variety of classrooms. A lot of them are doubled up as well with different classes, sharing classrooms as well. Then you go up to the third floor and essentially you see, you start to see some departments kind of set up, the blue, the green and the light green, dark green. But you see how they're kind of set up here, it's just that they just don't fit. And if you really look in the center section, you can see how some of those classes are really, really small, they're about 500 square feet. Typically, we look at 800 or more for a typical classroom. So they're really constrained on space. So it's really the space is the issue for a lot of these rooms. And then the next level here is just the fourth floor, which is the upper level of the library and a few other spaces that are kind of inaccessible ADA. All right, so with all that, now we're looking at the proposed plans. All right. So with all that, now we're looking at the proposed plans and...
Yeah. Just wanted to make a point. The plans that you're seeing here are definitely not plans. They're going to look like the same thing as the existing. What we're doing, the color coding is just grouping area, not grouping, and we have not created any spaces yet, any new spaces. It's all going to be pretty much the same. The color coding is just showing you the amount of square footage that we think that that program needs, and it crosses over walls and things like that. So what you're seeing here tonight is not a proposed floor plan for the new work to be done. We haven't, definitely not have gotten even close to that yet. This is really a, again, a conceptual plan with color coding, showing how much area that we might need for our particular program.
So starting on the lower level, we're basically looking at an expansion of the cafeteria, turning that into a common space, looking at expanding that, sorry, expanding that vertically. If you go down there, there's not much access to natural light. The rest of the building has pretty good access to natural light, but that cafeteria common space is kind of buried in the basement. So bringing that vertically up as much as we can to get natural light in that, really make it a showcase and a student commons. Commons is used all throughout the day, so that's really the goal of that space. Going up to the first floor, again, you can just see, start to create some different departments laying out, shifting program around, really just to see how it will fit spatially. So again, just, just kind of shifting some program here. You can see that the rainbow starts to go away and programs start to develop a little bit more clear. One thing to point out as well is the south entrance, just off this auditorium. Looking at that as a potential opportunity for secured entrance, so something like that, since it's right across from the parking lot at grade. So again, starting to just look at some of those concepts of ADA. On to the next one. Then up on the second floor, again, just a regrouping of some spaces. The gym and the aux gym kind of stay as is, as a frame of reference here, but then just that rainbow effect starts to go away as these develop, as the departments kind of grow as needed in space. And then up on the third floor, again, just, you can kind of see how the departments fit a little better with two instead of three. They spread out and kind of fill the space a little better. And then we're proposing as well as a, an infill of the third floor here, which could potentially be the spot for the library to move. Again, that would allow some shifting of program as well. So to fill in this floor, gain all that extra space for other, other programs to really grow and stretch out inside the building. And then as well, the, the next floor here, just the fourth floor, nothing, nothing major there. All right. And then we'll close out here with just a few thoughts on the, some inspiration photos, just as a frame of reference. This was a cafeteria project we did, very similar, where it was strapped in the basement, had not much natural lights. We expanded it in plan as well as vertically as well, so it got a lot of natural light. Really just trying to make that a grand place, a destination space. And the natural light and volume really goes a long way for a space like that. The next one here is actually a concept sketch that we're working on now for South Campus at Lyons Township, that they're looking at in addition as well. But again, this just highlights what a two-story volume can do for a space like that. Can become a lot more than a cafeteria space that's used in a destination for students all day long. Couple more common spaces as well. Those really just emphasize what a, the extra volume and access to natural light can help with a space, as well as multi-level, as we know this building's multi-level, so that'd probably be an aspect of this as well. But tying in those levels together, especially with the commons here and the library up above, how those could be really the student center of, of the building. Then just a couple library renovation examples, kind of a little bit more modern feel on the left, and a little bit more school-branded on the right, just a couple concepts of future, what modern twenty-first century libraries look like today. And then typical classrooms as well, so not leaving those aside, but just to give those a face left. And this is, this could be as simple as just the materials. Floor, ceiling, and paint can go a long way to updating classrooms. And then science labs as well. You familiar with the one on the left? That's over at East Campus. So just a couple snapshots of what those modern science labs look like today, whether they have flexible furniture fixed. It's kind of a, a variety out there today, but again, just an example of some updates there. And a couple more spaces, some of the more business tech, CTE, kind of concentrated labs, incubator labs, so innovation labs as we call them, so a little bit more modern and high-tech kind of spaces. And then just open collaboration spaces, whether they're enclosed in rooms or in the corridors. This is something, the students really, nothing like that in school right now. There's no collaboration spaces for staff or students. So it's, it just gives the students something outside of a typical classroom, somewhere else to go, to break up the day, break up the week, a destination spot to go to. And as well, these are more of the open hubs. The one on the left is kind of a open hub in between several classrooms. The one on the right is showing just how you can extend a part of a corridor and make almost a classroom out of half a corridor there. And then breakout rooms. These are especially big now with one-on-one meetings with students and staff, or small groups, or even podcasting, recording, a lot of green screens with all the way technology is going. Having these kind of rooms are really beneficial for all the things students are doing with technology. And then staff collaboration as well. Having spaces for staff to meet and collaborate interdepartment or interdepartment, giving them a place to go and meet, and putting it on display to students as an option as well, just to really make the students and teachers feel comfortable together as a resource for one another. And then preserving historic character. We know it was probably the biggest thing we heard from all the stakeholders was the, they love the historic nature of the building. So certainly being conscious of that and looking to preserve that and make, make it part of the building. That's just a couple examples of a blend of modern and historic. So giving an idea on the construction timeline, how long would all of this take? It's a good question. And we think that probably construction would be three to five years in multiple different phases. Those phases would be, yet to be determined based on what projects are grouped within the building, what projects are accepted. But we would see, at least in twenty twenty-four, the beginning of twenty-four, some type of referendum would be, would be needed to attack everything. So that would be the infrastructure improvements and the capital improvements or the general modeling combined. So to do everything and really transform the school. And then later that year, in twenty-four, we would begin the design work, and then twenty-five, we would start construction. And that would probably go until twenty-eight or even thirty, depending on how different departments are moving in the building, how we want to phase and structure the construction projects, how much can be bid off at one time. So there's, there's essentially a lot more conversation that needs to happen to get to that point. But just to give some general overview of what it could possibly be, we're, we're comfortable saying about three to five years to transform the school. So to kind of wrap up the master planning process of where we are, what we were asked to do, essentially, we just started the conversation. This is, as Eric mentioned and Rich mentioned, this is not the final answer or the final solution. We were, you know, tasked to start talking with, with all of the stakeholders, get all of the feedback, synthesize the data, determine what is, what are the most important infrastructure and general modeling needs of the building, and then do some initial programming. You know, what if we moved departments around or created different spaces to transform this building into what all the stakeholders were asking for? And so that's where we are right now, basically, just giving an update to the board and the community. Here's where we are in the process, and there's many more conversations and planning to go, but we, we at least started having the conversation and the discussions. So we're open to any questions from the board or...
Questions from board members, things you'd like to know, or things you'd like to ask, or things you'd like to say, reactions, thoughts?
There is one thing I do want to ask. It's actually directed to our student board members. Could you once again compare, like, just looking at these plans, how different would the education between, the education between Central and the East be? Like, you know, you, sorry, just to clarify.
Do you want me to clarify? I think I get what you're saying. All right. So looking at your experiences at, at Central Campus and then going over to East Campus, how much do you feel like your education has been improved by a newer facility?
Yeah.
What have you been able to do at East Campus that you may not have been able to do here?
I think that for me personally, sorry, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
I think that for me personally, at least the bare minimum should be renovated at Central, like HVAC, and then as well as expanding our space for our special ed community over at East, or over at Central, I'm sorry. I think that the interconnectiveness at East is really important for us, and I know that a lot of students benefit from the expansion of the port at East, as well as the different community spaces for the students.
Um, sorry, can you hear me?
Pull that a little closer to you, Chelsea.
And I guess how, how important is community space to the students? I think that that's something that we've addressed a few times.
Yeah, that's actually something I wanted to ask with DLA, because something I was really kind of struck by was the no common spaces, because I've been a librarian aide for four years now, and I was a librarian aide even through COVID. And even in COVID, the library was seen as a refugee, a sanctuary for kids to come and study and learn, and just also things such as, that we talked about, podcasting and common areas. That was all in the library. So I wonder, why are we putting in so much effort into changing things such as the cafeteria and other spaces when even at East, the common area isn't necessarily the cafeteria, it's more so the library? I would wonder if that would also limit cost and energy and effort in such ways.
Good question. Thank you.
And thank you for presenting, by the way.
Oh, sure. No problem. Great to do that. Actually, we do have, we did actually are moving the porter, the media center of the library, and, and there is plan for renovating that and making, improving that as well. The cafeteria was just a great opportunity because, one, it's not accessible currently in its current state. So we're trying to address that, but also to give the, the students the larger area. That it's not necessarily a cafeteria space to eat, but also maybe some presentations and/or some small theater-type or drama-type activities could happen in that space as well. So that more activity-type space doesn't necessarily happen in the, in the media center when you're, have some people trying to study and trying to do those kinds of activities. So having multiple areas like that is beneficial to a school. So basically, we are creating a, a media center that is in, at the port room, improving that to be, continue to be a gathering space for the students, but also the cafeteria then will be added, another space as well, and just a different multiple-function space.
One more thing that I wanted to point out is, education as it is now is much different than even from when I was in high school. So like Compass didn't exist when I was in high school. When you guys have the opportunity to use the common spaces, how often would you girls say that you use the common spaces, and how crowded does it seem when you do find the time to use the common spaces?
It's pretty crowded usually in the port, especially before and after school, as well as the common space by the coffee shop at school. But I think it's everyday use, at least for us.
So you use it every day?
Mm-hmm.
You use those areas to gather? Like, do you use it to just socialize, or do you use it for projects? Do you use it for studying?
Both. Students are allowed to kind of congregate in the areas before and after school, as well as during passing periods and Compass. But a lot of times I've noticed that when we have group work that we do in class, our teachers will allow us to go use the space outside of the classroom to work together.
Especially after school as well. We host a lot of clubs in the breakout rooms or the flex rooms, as well as we host community events. I know a while back, we had an AP, like, fair where families can come and learn more about AP classes from students. So it is a multifunctional space that is open not only for students, but for the whole entire community to come.
One of the downfalls again of the current port room here at Central is the accessibility. Pretty much all the mezzanines that are there currently aren't, aren't accessible to the people that are in wheelchair or are disabled in that way. So the new port room does allow for full access. Again, ADA issues are prevalent throughout the building. Back in the day, they didn't really think about that, and so that definitely shows in, in this facility. Just even in this theater, you can, you can see many areas that are in violation of accessibility.
Quickly, Chelsea, did you, do you also use it every day? Do you also use the common areas every day to study and socialize?
Yes, I go to the port every day, because, I mean, I work there in my study hall. So yes, I use it every single day. I would say that the port is the one that I utilize most. The hubs are a nice addition to sit there after school when possible. They're not as open during the school day, but I would say the port is a nice thing because it just allows you to have a nice free time, and it's very open.
Okay.
I did have a quick question. Well, this discussion, this could go on all night, but you talked a lot of numbers today. We talked about this in our committee meeting with Ann and Bob and I. The students, so this would be a phased project, they'll be in this school as you do phase by phase, or will they be moved to the other campuses? Or to the East Campus?
We haven't got into the great details of that, but in the phase that you saw Peter present, that is thinking that the students are going to be staying in this facility, and most of the work we're going to be trying to do during the summer months. There might be some spaces that we're able to occupy, like the theater here might, doesn't get used very often at all anyway. So that might be our, our first focus is to try to remodel this space to allow, again, more room to be flexible in the rest of the construction and/or, yeah, the work that's going to be done. So although we have not, definitely not gotten into the detail of phasing of it, but right now, we think that most of it can be done with the students still in the building.
With the entire freshman class still in this building?
Correct. Otherwise, I mean, if we didn't, we could definitely shorten the, the construction schedule down, but that's why we have it down to three to five years.
The, you know, that option, if you closed the building, you would likely, I don't think likely, you'd have to do split schedules, because East Campus couldn't accommodate another thousand students, so you'd have to split the day. Early arrivals at like six-thirty, leaving at maybe twelve-thirty-one, new arrivals coming in at ten, maybe leaving much later in the day. I don't think that's desirable for anyone, really. It's not, you know, it's very difficult, it's very difficult to do. And so I think, you know, embedded in this, in this proposal would be keeping students in the building. One of the neat things, as Gary Ward in the audience would know, the building was built in phases, and so it can also be remodeled and renovated in phases as well. So...
I have another question. With our superintendent advisory board, some of the things...
Could you speak a little closer to the mic?
Yeah, you might have to, Chelsea, just pull that a little bit closer.
Just pull it closer to you.
It's got a tough bass, but there you go.
Thank you so much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. With our superintendent advisory board, some of the things that the students really cared about is exploring some of the unknown, like, rooms and places in the building. And another thing that they really cared about is, like, outside spaces. So I was wondering if there's any part of the renovation that, like, takes care of a yard and kind of mimics what we have in East and outside classroom in a way?
If you take a look at the site plan that we had, I think it was on the first floor plan that we showed, there was a little green area outside the main entrance. Next one? There, that one. See the, the green area there? That's, thinking of that, it's obviously just a general area of, okay, outdoor learning space, and thinking of that, and we did here, and that's just showing you that we listened, and we're going to, we have that on the plan, right? So we, but we have no idea what it's going to look like, but thinking that that's something that is needed and wanted for the school. That's the, the sole area where that green is, and all the way that front part of that, that building, that's basically all the green space you have in this, on this site. You don't have anything else. It's all concrete sidewalk to the road. So we, that's about where we were concentrating on thinking we could do some outdoor learning.
Yes, I mean, I know that, I mean, even on, it's not so much schools, but even like on State Street, you know, we have a lot of historic buildings there, and Gary Ward can attest to that, and, you know, there's been a lot of renovations, you know, on all those restaurant buildings, and just going, I mean... Then, you know, there's been a lot of renovations, you know, on all those restaurant buildings and just going, I mean, you still have the facade outside of being in a historic building. But when you go inside and all these restaurants, it's like, wow, it's it's just totally modernized.
Correct, right.
And I really, and you know, being so much, you know, on on the education part, I really feel that, you know, you know, just from hearing from our citizens committee, we want this to continue as a freshman center because from what Dr. McBride said, that's what a lot of high schools do not have. They do not have a freshman center. And I can attest to that because I think I have um, a cousin that's going, you know, she's a freshman right now going into Plainfield, I believe it's Plainfield North. But she's already lumped in with with seniors. And just the age difference, you know, it's very, it it's just social. And and plus, I mean, right now we're dealing with seven feeder school districts, one uh, parochial school and other ones that maybe, and all they're all coming here together and they sort of bond. I mean, they really do. And and um, Dr. Carrie um, Green over there, that she does a phenomenal job, you know, trying to put them on together with fresh start, you know, just bringing them all together, bonding them. And I think that this is a really excellent place for it to continue being a school. And I, I mean, I I did, I worked on the referendum committee those times way back years ago. And and I want to say the main question was always, it was always asked, what are you going to do with such, what are you going to do with such? And I think there was really no answer to that because at that point we had no idea, should we board it up? Should we sell it? And then who's going to take on a building that needs like thirty million dollars worth of renovation? And then who's going to buy it? Is it going to be in condos? You know, we just didn't know. But I mean, Gary, I was, I was young, I mean, Gary, I'm sure you remember too, when uh, Central Square, it was boarded up for many years. It was in ISOR. And Embers, that was another one too, this restaurant, Embers, that was in ISOR too. And and look what they did, you know, it's a beautiful building and I feel that we need, you know, to preserve our buildings. And I know it's going to cost, you know, quite a bit, but I feel that, you know, as a board member, it's, let's let the community decide, you know, should this school continue? Should this building continue as a freshman center? But I thank you, thank you for for your presentation.
You're welcome. Grateful. Thank you, everyone.
I did have one more question though also. Sorry.
No, go ahead.
This is definitely a beautiful building, a lot of history to it, obviously. Um, you did make mention of uh, if they were to build a new school. There's different options that will be up for discussion. You you threw out two hundred million dollars for a new school. How big would that school be? You're, that would be on our property, obviously, and um, Hundred Fifty-Ninth and Bell, was it? Would that be a, like a freshman center that you're talking about? Or is that an entire new high school for three, four, five thousand students?
Yeah, as Peter mentioned, it wasn't an apples to apples necessarily, we're just trying to show you the example of the inflation factor that we had and what a new high school would cost you. Um, so it did, that number did include a new high school. I, we didn't quite figure out, we didn't get into the science of not amount of square footage or amount of students that would be in that building, but a typical high school is around that price range. Uh, about what did we figure about a hundred and fifty thousand square feet?
And and just to get to intercheck where the root of that, Mr. Borisma is. Um, the proposed plan in those years, two thousand six, seven, eight, nine, was to build another nine through twelve high school. So a full high school, imagine East, and you would have a a school district, high school district of two nine through twelve buildings. Lockport East and then um, another new building at that property that would have to be named and 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 decided upon. So that was what was offered in terms of new construction, a brand new building uh, that would be nine through twelve. So that's kind of that basis, that was a four hundred and seventy-one thousand square foot building. So just looking at what new construction of a modern high school building, which is about the square footage of a of a fully functional uh, high school building. That was kind of the strategy that the district uh, approached, working with Central, approached the community.
And then just to add to that, and you gentlemen could probably correct me if I'm wrong. So say there was a new facility built on Hundred Fifty-Ninth and Cedar, this facility would no longer be used. If we decided to do something like shutter it, when or if it were to be reopened or if somebody were to purchase it, it would had to have to be brought up to code at that point in time. So it would, I, we would have to also pay for this building to either maintain in some way, shape or form functionality. Or if we shutter it to reopen it, the cost of that would also be astronomical. So just something to point out. Am I correct?
Correct, yes. And if you went back the ten or fifteen years now that it'd been when we first did the assessment of the building, the price obviously has increased from what the price was back then. The inflation factor affects everybody and it definitely has affected the repair and the maintenance of this building.
And I can attest to that too, because I think years before then too, they, a lot of comments were made as far as, you know, keeping Central, we would still, we would keep, keeping, we would still own Central with the new high school being built, but there were a lot of comments saying, oh, let's just tear down Central. It would save you a lot of money, you know, and 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 just try to sell the vacant land to residentials. And and for me personally to see that happening, you know, in a historic building being torn down, it would just break my heart. And I'm sure every community member that lives here in Lockport, you know, Homer, Paramount area, everywhere, they would just be devastated by that.
It's a beautiful building.
It is.
And, you know, kind of wrapping up, when I, when I tour with people, there's certainly an idea that, you know, one thing we offer is, you know, the history. Uh, for a hundred and fourteen years, porters have gone through this building. And um, continuing that tradition is important to the community, it's a tradition in the community, it's possible. It's less costly than new construction. And in 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 some ways, it is more equity based because every porter has a benefit coming through here, obviously not the porters who have passed through already. But every future porter would have access to this, whereas when you determine two different high school buildings, then you have to get into the acrimony sometimes that's felt in communities where one group goes to this building, another group goes to that building. Um, those are some very difficult situations for boards of education and for citizens as well. So thank you, thanks so much.
Sure.
One one comment on that is the duplication of this building, it would be a lot more money than we're talking about. Uh, and brand new with the craftsmanship and the the masonry artwork that we have on this facility would be quite a bit of money, uh, just to replicate what you have here. So you have a lot of value in the building itself, based on its historical um, properties and materials that were used to construct it.
Thanks so much, we'll be back, we're going to be spending a lot of time over the next month, you'll be hearing from me quite a bit. Uh, you know, we have another finance and facility meeting, we'll be jumping into this, talking, narrowing what the proposed cost uh, could be as well. So thanks so much to DLA, we appreciate you and, you know, appreciate everybody uh, listening in.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Mrs. Lopez-Carina, I might make an agenda um, recommendation here that we move down to agenda item M, our two action considerations. Because we have another important, you know, issue, the conversation about the budget. We don't have to do that, but um, you know, I know it's nine o'clock already.
Okay.
Uh, if, I don't, that's really your call.
Sure, it's fine.
But I might recommend we dive, kind of flow right into that and then have our reports if board members are okay with that. Um, because I think it's important to talk about the action item and, you know, just about the 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 budget. Um, so if you're okay going to agenda item M, you don't require a motion to move to another uh, agenda item because it's already published uh, agenda.
I understand, is this what the action consideration? Okay.
So deal with both of our action considerations right now.
Okay, we're going into, let's see, it would be um, action on student number two oh five. I'm sorry, wait, I'm going, we're going into uh, the action considerations, which is action on student number two oh five oh three oh seven three two. I believe Dr. Shaw was going to read that motion, right? Dr. Shaw?
I am, yes. All right, so I move that based up on, based upon and after the board's consideration of the evidence and the testimony of the expulsion hearing held on September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. The Board of Education find finds that student number two zero five zero three zero seven three two has committed assault and battery towards another student as charged by the district's administration. And that the student number two zero five zero three zero seven three two committed assault and battery towards another student on September fifth, which, uh, twenty twenty-three, which is in violation of the Student Behavior Code pages thirty through thirty-seven in the Porter Planner. I move that the Board of Education expels student number two zero five zero three zero seven three two for two years. But that expulsion be held in abeyance and the student number two zero five zero three zero seven three two be administratively transferred to an alternative school as determined by the district's administration. Pursuant to Article thirteen A of the Illinois School Code, the inter interventions previously attempted with the student included at the minimum character education initiatives, character education rallies, dean office policy and procedure video, emotional management in PE, the SWAT opportunities, porter pride recognition and tutoring opportunities, kitchen table, NHS tutoring, voluntary MIS tutoring and Compass time. Also, student teacher meetings, counselor contact meetings, parent teacher conferences, letters sent to the parent and restorative conferences. Removing student number two zero five zero three zero seven three two from the learning environment is in the best interest of the school because it, because the student's continuing presence in school would pose a threat to the safety of other students, staff and members of the school community and would substantially disrupt, impede and interfere with the operation of the school. The duration of student number two zero five zero three zero seven three two's expulsion is appropriate based upon the gravity of the misconduct, the safety concerns and disruption caused by the misconduct and the prior interventions utilized to support the student and promote acceptable behavior and acceptable means of conflict resolution. The expulsion being held in abeyance is contingent upon the the student's full participation in the alternative school program, including regularly attending school, complying with attendance policies, school rules and any referrals for services or counseling made by the alternative school and successfully completing the alternative school's curriculum. And that I move that student, should student number two zero five zero three seven, zero seven three two fail to fully participate in the alternative school program and the alternative school refers the student back to the district, student number two zero five zero three zero seven three two shall be immediately expelled from Lockport Township High School District number two oh five for the remainder of the district administration's recommended expulsion duration through um, May of twenty twenty-six.
I will second that motion. Roll call.
Travis?
Travis?
All right.
Timon Rogers?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Borisma?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Lopez-Carina?
Yes.
All right, second, do I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year budget?
So moved?
Uh, can we discuss that?
Yeah.
We'll motion and then we'll discuss. And then we'll, we'll give it. All right. I can second that. All right, are there any questions?
And we've got Mrs. Kroy right here, uh, you know, back at the podium. You know, just kind of remind the board, you might have seen the the email that I sent you yesterday, kind of thinking of two phases here. The tentative budget, the budget and and then the levy process. And most of what we heard tonight uh, acknowledges that the budget is a setup for the levy and that the levy is the process that directly impacts the taxpayers. So the budget, in thinking about it, is an analysis that Mrs. Kroy has done of expenditures and anticipated revenue over the next year that really drapes over to school year. So the budget presents all budgets in the end of the day are a draft because they're they're subject to change, things happen differently, they're something that you anticipate. Um, it's Mrs. Kroy's projection, you know, I I I agree with her of what we will see in terms of expenditures and the revenues uh, that we'll need to to meet those. The expenditure side are the items that we would need to fund the programs that that we've established as a district. After that budget process, then the board has to enter into a process of determining how you are going to fund that budget. My recommendation, you you've seen in here, is to approve this budget, but then have a discussion about uh, how you're going to fund it. What what you heard tonight in public comment is there are a number of different ways to to fund that. Uh, one way is to levy the exact amount of the budget, you certainly can do that, boards do that. Another way that was suggested was that you take a careful look at your fund balances and you use your fund balances to ameliorate some of the um, amount of the levy. That's another strategy uh, that boards can use. You apply fund balances to operating expenses and assets. So far strategically, you've applied fund balances to capital projects. Roofs, libraries, uh, chillers, um, sound and and um, light at at the auditorium. So you've applied it that way, you could similarly uh, over the next couple of months, we have between now and December, come up with a strategy uh, that uses fund balances in a different way. Uh, you could explore that a- as well. So just kind of framing that up, two phases. One, um, you know, I would advise that you you vote yes if you believe that Mrs. Kroy has done a fair um, estimation of revenues and expenditures and prepared a budget to function the next year. But then entering into a period of decision-making and discernment about your strategy to actually fund that budget. So there's a lot in play, we we heard some ideas from the public, there's certainly ideas here and obviously Mrs. Kroy. So just opening up for questions for Mrs. Kroy or myself, um, things the board wants to discuss, things that Mrs. Kroy might want to, you know, mention about the budget as well. But we're most interested in your questions.
I think you had a question.
Yes, there's a, I just think there's a uh, definitely something to take a look at. We're bombarded with emails over this weekend, um, not a ton of them, but enough to take a look at things. Um, and I was kind of going through everything as much as I could today and yesterday. Um, just as far as other board members too, where can we find this money? Um, so as far as the levy goes, what's the max, um, what's the max percentage we're allowed to uh, uh, set by the state?
We're allowed to increase the levy. So in this economy, um, there, you you have to differentiate two things. I think it was Mr. Portfilio mentioned the total levy last year. So on existing property, because we have something called the property tax extension limitation law. On existing property, we, the the max, even though inflation is higher than five percent, five percent is the cap. But on new property, first time property that comes on to uh, the tax rolls, that limitation is not there on that new property. So last year, five percent on existing property going up to six percent because that additional one percent is that new property that's coming on for the first time. So, you know.
So what are, what are we, we're at four point nine percent, was it?
Uh, you, on the existing property?
What we're raising right now with the levy.
On on this, this would be to five percent because we're capped at five percent. But that, the budget increase is different than the levy increase.
Okay.
So tonight, we're talking about the budget increase, not not the levy increase. Uh, they're 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 slightly different because you can approve a budget, say this is what the budget is, but then determine what are your funding sources for the budget. For example, some of the folks that we heard from tonight are um, recommending a strategy where you lower the levy and use some of your existing fund balances to fill in part of that gap.
Right, so that's kind of what I was getting at too, was to lower the levy possibly, um, that's been brought up, there's, there's a lot of things brought up. As far as our cash on hand too, and us as a board, we can talk about it, um, where where can we come up with these funds? I don't, so the number four million was thrown out in somebody emails. Our cash on hand, so right now we can operate the school for twelve months right now with our cash on hand, right?
Mm-hmm, right. And that's been a goal that the board has set. Now, the board, you can revisit in the levy period, you can revisit that goal. Um, you know, six to twelve has been used uh, by the board in the past so that you um, have the financial recognition that was mentioned. With financial recognition comes a higher credit rating. So that's why the board in the past has set six to twelve months of cash on hand. I mean, Mrs. Kroy, thoughts that you have?
And we're max, just to be, we're click, we're maxed out at, we're at the high end of it, we're at twelve months right now, right? With our cash on hand?
As of right now, yes.
Yeah.
But the way that, um, like I explained to the board um, previously is that we, we're like at the high water mark at six thirty all the time because we've just collected all our revenue. So we're kind of at that high water mark and so it'll go down a little bit, right, as we spend. Um, but yes, we are at the twelve months cash on hand, you are correct.
So what happens if we go down?
You use some of the reserves, I mean, really, that's that's your choice, you can decide to use some of the reserves. Um, and the ultimate consequences of that are, um, the profile score that was discussed earlier, that is one of the measures, there are mult- the profile score that was discussed earlier, that is one of the measures, there are multiple measures. So deficit spending is another one. I don't think that it would be impacted by one year, but I'd have to look at that formula, I don't remember one of the other pieces of that. I think it's multiple years of deficit spending, but that's what you'd be doing if you're going to start using some of that fund balance, is you'd be bringing that cash on hand down, and you'd be spending from fund balance. So you'd be spending, like I believe somebody spoke this earlier this evening, about spending more than you take in, that's exactly what we'd be doing for some period of time, whatever we choose that to be. There's something you said earlier that I wanted to respond to, but...
Can I, over here.
Sorry. I'm sorry, I'm short, I can't see.
No, no, I'm sure too. All right, so we talked, we had a wonderful presentation from our architects today, we have some things that we are looking forward to, you know, proposing to our community in the future. Obviously, with that, we would be needing to take out some finances. How would our rating be impacted, and how would that impact our interest rate if we were to spend down our cash on hand?
That's a really good question. I don't know the, exactly what that would impact, but what I do know is when we have to issue any debt, we would have to go through one of the rating companies and have our bonds that we're going to be issuing rated. The last time we did that, we had a very high rating, and a part of that is because of the money we have, the solvency, right? But Moody's or Standard and Poor's would have to rate us again, and depending on where we're at at the time that they interview the district for that rating and look at our finances, I mean, I can't say what they would do because I don't know their system, right? Like, I've responded to their inquiries, but I've not, you know, I'm not on their side of how they actually rate. But it's potential that it could impact the bond rating, yes.
So say we spend that money down, the voters decide, yes, we would like to move forward with the renovation of Central, we go get our bond rating, the bond rating changes in some negative facet, this project that's projected to be a certain amount of money right now could essentially cost us in the long run more money down the road.
You could have a higher interest rate, yes, that is true. I don't know how much, right? I don't know how significant that impact would be.
Okay, and then the other thing that I, I know we touch on this all the time, but I think it's good for the community to know, the difference between the tax rate and the levy. The tax rate is essentially what impacts taxes and how much money is taking out, taken out of the, based off of the EAV, but what we decide isn't necessarily what raises the taxes, correct?
There's two pieces to what raises the taxes, right? That rate is calculated by two pieces, the levy and the EAV. So we control one piece of that, we don't control the other piece of that, yeah.
We control the amount that we levy on taxpayers.
The numerator.
Someone mentioned that the quadrennial assessments came out, and, you know, many of those quadrennial assessments, like last year, the Will County assessor did a, across the board, raise of 6% of assessed values of homes. And then in many of our areas, township assessments went up 7%. Sometimes that's good news, the value of your home is, or the value of your property is going up, it's going in a positive direction. But because your taxes are rated indexed against that, that value of your home, the value of your home goes up, your tax, your property taxes go up as well. You can see that as a benefit if you sell your home or you're investing in your home. You could also see that as something you have to pay, and that could be seen as burdensome as well. So there's both at play, there's a tension there.
Yeah, and I think you did mention too that, you know, here we've always, the tax rate has been going down, the tax rate.
It has, that, I mean, and that's typical when our EAVs are going up, right? And we're, we have been paying off debt, right? Like, the district doesn't, Lockport doesn't really have any significant debt, we have two bond issues outstanding, and that's because we haven't done significant renovations like the, like the architects talked about, right? We've done smaller renovations to East Campus. Because of that, we don't have a lot of debt right now. The only two outstanding pieces we have would be paid off, if we issue no other debt, we'd be debt-free in 2030. Speaking of the tax rate, there are, and the levy, there are two pieces to that, right? So when we're talking about debt and taxes tied to debt, that is not an operating tax rate, that's your bond and interest tax rate. That is established at one time when the bonds are issued. So if the voters were to approve a referendum, we would follow through on that and issue the bonds that we, that the voters approved us to issue, and then we would, in that same bond document, which is hundreds of pages long with all kinds of legal stuff in them, but part of that is the levy that will be needed to pay off those bonds over the whole life of the bonds. So that's established and approved one time when those bonds are approved. And so that is not something that, that's a non-operating tax rate, it's a bond and interest tax rate. So annually, when the board approves the tax rate, or the tax levy, which determines the rate, right, with the EAV, the rate, the levy that you're approving is the operating rate. It's intended to fund your education, your operations and maintenance, your transportation, your pension funds, IMRA, FICA, and Medicare, or Social Security and Medicare. That's what's, that's what it's intended to fund, right? And so then what happens is when we don't spend what we expect to spend because of whatever the circumstances that may be, we do accumulate fund balance. Part of it is purposeful, to build our goal of cash on hand, and then sometimes it's accidental, right? Like, we get COVID funds in, that we didn't expect, and we pay bus drivers with those funds. Well, the budget didn't plan for those back in 2021, or 2020. So we had, yeah, so we had extra funds in that particular fund that time. So sometimes that happens as well, right? We get maintenance grants that we didn't plan for, we get other grants and things that we didn't plan for, or things cost less than we thought they were going to. We put money in the budget for it so that we had it if it cost what we thought it was going to, but then we end up accumulating all these balances, right? Then we've historically used those to improve our facilities. So that's the accumulation of the fund balances we were talking about, and how we end up with those, right? Like, we're not intending necessarily to purposely, purposefully over-budget or over-accumulate. It's often unintentional. We plan that, okay, we think things are going to cost 5% more, but they cost 4.7% more, and then we save that, you know, that money.
So historically, we've been able to go and improve our facilities without going to a referendum?
Correct, or issuing more debt, right, absolutely. And so then, one of the other things I wanted to talk about or mention to the board, the capital improvement item, so the cost that you see for capital projects in the budget, because we are cash basis, even though we have the money for that, the actual expenditure is happening this year. We're a cash-based school district, so what that means is the money that we actually put in the bank this year is how we record our revenue, and the money we actually write checks for is the expenditures in the budget. So while that project is done to, you know, to the almost perfect extent, right, like there might be punch list items left, and that's it, a lot of that expenditure was July 1st on, which is why it's in this year's budget. Does that make sense?
We're paying, we're in essence, we're paying for it now.
I can't necessarily remove that item from the budget because then we would be, we would have an audit finding that says that we spent more than we budgeted because...
And you're referring to the $4 million that we heard about this evening?
Capital projects, yeah, yeah. It's in the fund balance, but we're actually spending it this year, so it has to be an expenditure line item this year. And it's a capital item, so it's not in the operating piece, if that makes sense. There is a difference between the capital pieces and the operating pieces, so.
Other questions for each other, or Mrs. Kroy, you know, tonight is approving the budget, and then you would, as a board, have your work cut out for you in terms of funding through the levy process. And kind of bringing it all the way back, much like you've elected, you have a couple things in play that I think you should probably ask yourself. Your goal of six to 12 months cash on hand, is that, is that still your goal? Is that still where you're at?
Which we do have right now, right?
I'm sorry, what, Mr. Boersma?
So we're at 12 months right now with that?
Right, and that's usually because we're at a high watermark because we just made tax collections. It'll, like Mrs. Kroy said, it will get spent down, we haven't gone below six months. So one is, where are you at with that? And then two, you've had a strategy of using fund balances to pay for capital items. Is that your continued strategy, the direction you'd like to give us? Or do you want to use some of that fund balance to fund your, this budget, right? And that, that does have a lowering of the levy effect. Do you want to use those fund balances for operating costs, not for capital costs? Think the thinking the board, if I had to summarize it, why have you put it in capital costs? Because that's the most real tangible thing that the community owns, it exists well beyond us. But there's nothing that impedes you from using fund balances for your operating costs. It's just a, it's a different strategy, and one you have all the way until December to think of.
And I want to say maybe like the history of why, you know, maybe previous boards they did that because they knew that eventually it was going to be a new roof that was going to be needed. If the spoiler at Central goes out, we're going to need that money. We're constantly, we're constantly, you know, making repairs here at Central, I mean, we see it on the maintenance report all the time that Mr. Bill Thompson supplies us, and you know, it's just, everything is just, it's, it's, our buildings are getting older, especially here at Central, and we're just constantly, you know, spending money. And, and yeah, and those capital improvements projects, I mean, those were for the parking lots, you know, now it's a section of the roof. Because from what I understand, it's not, the roof is not completely...
I was going to say that, thank you.
The roof is not completely done.
That was just part of it.
We just did a section of the roof, so we still need other sections that need to be done. So, I mean, those, those are the types of monies that we've been using.
So the roof was in question too, that was one of the emails we received over the weekend. So was that money saved because they mentioned in 2022?
Yeah, I think there was a maintenance report that mentioned, and I think, I don't want to interpret Mrs. Kroy's report, but I think what she was saying is that over time, those fund balances, this kind of strategy of being able to have fund balances that can address 1 million, 4 million, 5 million dollar projects, typically, those are projects that communities go for referendum, they go out to the voters, and they go for referendum on those, those projects. Our district hasn't done that, they've handled that with, with fund balances, anticipating, like Mrs. Lopez Caneva said, parking lots, roofs, all of those kind of, kind of things.
Right, so, did we say that we had those funds or we do not, for the roofing project?
Those are going to be spent from the fund balance, so the operations and maintenance fund will have a reduction in fund balance.
Right.
For the, for what's left of that, yeah.
But the time that we pay that is now, so that's why that's in this year's budget.
So, one of the other things, Dr. McBride, as you were talking about, going to, the voters going to a referendum for any kind of a large project stretches out a project, like DLA was talking about, there is a, there's a lengthy process, right? So the board would have to approve that you, that you want to do that, then there's waiting periods to be able to even issue them, and then you have to issue them, and then you have to go to bid for the project, and then you, so in a project where you've got parts of the roof that need to be replaced for air quality, if we had to stretch that out and wait for the voters and the bond issuance, it pushes that that much longer that we have a building that we really need repaired. So some of the smaller projects, it makes sense to try and do ourselves without asking the voters.
We're just quicker at getting at it.
Yes, that's what we're getting at.
Right, you know, what you probably saw on the, you know, the major capital project, like if we did a capital project here, you don't have a shovel in the ground for 18 months after any time that you have approval for any kind of funding because there's so much preparation has to take place. You know, so all of that is to say, you know, just kind of bringing it back around, my recommendation, I think Mrs. Kroy's recommendation is that you approve this budget, but then we have some work to reexamine some of the directives you've given us in terms of the levy, and thinking how you want to fund that, that actual budget. You do have options that you can explore, and like anything, that's strategic, there's some benefits of that, of certain strategies, there's some drawbacks of certain strategies as well. Being a smaller district, you know, historically, I think Mrs. Lopez Caneva is correct, high school districts, historically, when property tax extension limitation law came in, really didn't benefit as much as K through 12 districts did in funding. Really had to start operating on their own in the state of Illinois, and that's very much what we're used to. State funding is far more stable now, some of our predictives are more stable, you might say you're going to go with a different strategy to form the levy, and that would be the next phase between really tomorrow morning and...
November, when we approve a tentative and December final. So one thing that the board needs to consider when they do that, if that's the route you choose, and we want to start using some fund balances and spending them down, the levy does impact two fiscal years. So if a levy for the 2023 tax year is approved, less than the maximum, or whatever, at whatever lesser amount, it impacts two years. So I just want to make sure that everyone understands that. We would not be just talking about how it impacts this current budget we're looking at, it would be next year's budget that we haven't even started looking at yet. And the impact there is going to be almost doubled from the perspective of we would be affected by a tax levy decrease, right? Like, so if we were to do one of the suggestions that was brought up and do the exact same levy that was done for 2022, it's approximately 3 million something, right? So half of that would affect this budget, and half of that would affect next budget. So that's 1.4 million or so for next year, right? The other piece that's going to affect next year is about that same amount of ASR funds that won't be available. So we're really going to have 3 million that we'll have to figure out what we're doing with next year if we were to do that, right? The board can do that if you so direct me. It's just a consideration that we would be impacted 1.4 million this year and about 3 million next year because we're kind of making up some money this year by using up the rest of the ASR money, if that makes any sense. We'll have a bigger shortfall, and we'd be eating into our fund balances more, that's what I'm getting at.
It does, yeah. We've talked so many numbers tonight. We're, so for a new school, we're between 40, 40 million and 115 million, and now we're looking at, we're penny pinching for the three point, the three and a half million right now. But we're just going to have to do what we think is right for the budget, I guess.
Okay, well, it's already been motion in seconds, so all we need is a ROPA.
Shaw?
Yes.
Boersma?
No.
Navara?
I would at least like to say that it definitely, you know, to at least look at how the economy is and how everybody is struggling, and pretty much all across the board, this has been even going on since last year. And I've always felt that at least, even if we can at least make a small amount of change, it would at least show that we are listening and we care. Because even if we can dip a little bit down into our reserves, or probably from other funds, I feel like with so many people invested so much on this, you know, it really, in the grand scheme of things, even if we save 0.5%, as he said, you know, $2,000, 0.5% of $2,000 is only 10 bucks, but if we can at least save like even just a couple of dollars for some people, at least it shows that we're listening and we care. So I, and at the same time, I just, I feel like we should definitely explore other strategies, and I can't, like, I have to say no for this.
And I just want to be clear, that's not what you're voting on tonight. So those additional strategies are not what you're voting on tonight, that would be in the levy process, so just want to make that clear to you.
Johnson?
Yes.
Jamone Rogers?
No.
Travis?
Yeah.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes.
Motion passed. I'm sorry.
What was the vote?
Four to three.
Four to three.
Okay. Well, let me move back then to...
So we're back on to...
Okay.
Okay, information reports.
No. Right here, information reports. Information reports. All right. Dr. Chris...
Who was the vote?
Motion passed. I'm sorry.
What was the vote?
Four to three. Four to three. Okay. Well, let me move back then to, um-
So we're back onto-
Okay.
Okay, information reports.
No. Information reports. Dr. Christopher and Dr. Huntington.
Uh, while we're changing over, can we look into those strategies we've been, we was discussing?
I, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, Ms. Johnson.
Can we look into, have a workshop or something, look at some of those strategies?
We could, that's the, you know, you certainly can have a special meeting and talk about some of your financial goals.
When would it be appropriate to have that special meeting?
You, you would have to decide that as a board when you, you want to do that. You've got to have a tentative levy in November. So you'd have to find some kind of time to, to have that.
Between now and then? Between now and then, between now and November?
Yeah, between now and November.
Okay.
Sometime, sometime in there.
That's for the levy, I didn't hear what he said.
Right. Um, that, that would be if you're going to change your strategies. And just again, um, the budget process is not the process to change those strategies. I guess I just want to be clear about that. You know, we've been working on the budget since July and the purpose of that is for people to ask questions about that and to clarify things about that. The budget is to, to run the school for the next year. The strategies to fund it now, begin now, now that a budget is passed. So the board has to do that work to make decisions about how you're going to fund it. That's the next step, not what you just voted on. So I just want to be really clear with the board.
No, I get that. So a lot came up over this past, over the weekend with the email. I didn't have time to, I couldn't call you today and go over it, so.
So, and I ju- I just want to throw this out there. I believe it was the last meeting. I, I had, I think I did speak to a few board members individually. Marty, I don't think you were one of them, I apologize for that. But since we have been talking about this budget since July, July to now was really the time to have the conversations that these folks wanted us to have. And unfortunately, those didn't happen. So legally, this needs to be approved this month. Otherwise, we're, we're looking at a-
So it has nothing to do with the levy?
What we just did today has nothing to do with the levy.
So then-
Well, they go together, but I, with all due respect, I would just say to board members, I tried to explain that a number of times. It's two processes.
It has to do with the budget.
Excuse me, Mr. Navara. Yeah, it has to do with the budget. Not, we're not, tonight what you just approved is not the levy. So with all due respect, on behalf of Stephanie Kroy, uh, to the no voters, you did not give us time to present you options for the levy, which actually is the thing that lowers taxes.
So technically, people who voted no should have did it in July?
No, not necessarily.
Not necessarily, no, because it's a, because it's a draft. But I, I guess what I want to make sure is that all board members understand the difference between the two processes. So what I, what I want to make sure, what you voted on this afternoon, this evening, impacts the levy only if you decide to levy that entire budget, um-
Onto the-
Onto, onto that levy. You take the entire budget increase and you say that will be straight out our levy. But what we talked about were some potential strategies to lower the levy. That, that whole process now, if that's the board's will, that whole process begins now. And I would just say to the no voters, with all due respect, you didn't give Mrs. Kroy or I any time to present those levy options to you. Um, so this superintendent is sitting here in a little bit of a state of non-understanding. And our board protocols are that when things come up, and to Mrs. Shaw's, Dr. Shaw's point, we only heard from these individuals in the past 48 hours.
Yeah, I mean, that's, it was a lot coming in.
And sometimes it is a lot coming in. Sometimes it is a lot. So go back to my original recommendation to the board. If you believe that the work that was done on the budget was, was strong work and we probably with the hour have to move on, if you believe that's strong work, vote yes. If you believe it was not strong work, vote no. That's what a no vote means.
So just for clarification purposes, the money that we're voting on tonight is absolutely what we need to pay our bills for next year.
With our projections. With the projections.
Right.
With the projections, yes.
Right.
So that being said, now we need to figure out how we're going to pay those bills. So right now, we know what we need to spend, but now we talk about how we're going to fund that. So I don't know what the, because this has never happened. Do, do we need to talk about revoting? Is that a possibility?
I would not recommend that.
Okay.
I mean, we also-
That would not be my, that would not be my vouch.
Just throwing it out there.
And the reason why I would say that is I understand schedules. I understand being busy. But also with all due respect to the board, we have been saying this for months. With all due respect. We have been saying for months that this is coming and it is an important decision. And just sometimes you feel that pressure. Sometimes, as James Baldwin said, you got to get your work done.
I don't regret my votes, just for the record, right, right now.
Right. But what I, what I do, what I am surprised about is, um, the, the level of interaction with the three individuals. This isn't the time to discuss this. But I, I, I hope we all knew what we were voting on. I hope that's ultimately, we understand the processes. And as superintendent, you have to give me an opportunity. If you have a process you don't understand, it's all fair play for you to give me an opportunity to explain that process to you. So I think the best thing to do is move on to our reports. That's what I would recommend. And if there are strategies that you want to look at for the levy, uh, digging into those, digging into those strategies is, is, that's what I would recommend.
Dr. McBride?
Yeah.
Not to make excuses, maybe the newer board members didn't understand that there's, you know-
A difference?
A different process, you know, process. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, point, point well taken.
My vote stands, but I'm just saying, maybe they didn't quite understand it.
Well, the time and place for you as a board to talk about acting, I, I will, we've been talking, as Dr. Shaw said, I guess the final thing I would say on this, then turn it back over to Lopez-Keneva. Been talking about this since July.
Yes.
The feedback you received was in the past 48 hours. So I'll just let that stand as a fact of which has more value.
And I go to always say, you know, every decision that we make affects our students.
Yep. And that's why I'm here with, with the board right now, because I care about the students.
All right. Okay, all right.
I just don't want you to think that I don't care about the students because I do. So if that's what you're implying, um, I do care about the students. So. And the community as a whole.
Everybody, I mean, it's always, you know, it is, this is one of the, this is the most difficult decision we always have to do, we as the board have to make, whether it's approving the annual budget or the, or strategies for the levy. All I have to say is that, that, you know, we also have reserve fund balances and it's also about choosing how much we put into these funds. You know, some of the strategies that they also said is maybe, maybe we should budget a little less for some of these funds. But it's fine.
I think it's time to move on.
All right. Okay. Dr. Christopher.
I guess we can move on.
Yes.
It's really good that I only have a 45-minute presentation prepared, right?
I'm sorry.
I'm just kidding. I'm totally kidding. I just want to, I put the report in the board docs, but I just wanted to highlight that we had over 60 projects, um, from our teachers who are so dedicated. And really, the summertime when they have kind of that 30,000-foot view and they're not responding to the students that are immediately in front of them to provide them support, that's some of the time that they can be the most creative and innovative. I don't review every single item in, that I share with you, but I do like you to have it so you can see all the great work that they're doing. And I paint some broad strokes for you as well to see that they're doing curriculum alignment. They're doing, how do we get more student voice? They're doing common assessments. They're doing a lot of work to support our growing EL population, English language learners. We have a lot more newcomers than we've had in the past. But I wanted to highlight just briefly three projects. So one project was done by our mathematics department in preparation for the new digital SAT test that is coming. What is in the SAT test is a program called DESMOS. And it is a, a digital and scientific calculator that is embedded in the program at the next curriculum meeting with the permission of our curriculum committee, uh, board members. I'd love to show them a demonstration, but if you're so inclined, you certainly can go into YouTube and type it because it's really cool to see how you can put numbers in and see it automatically change on a graph.
What's it called?
DESMOS, D-E-S-M-O-S. Another project I wanted to highlight for you was some work of our US history teachers. The teachers did a survey through Thought Exchange, which the board is really familiar with, just to ask the students for some feedback about their experience in US history. And so, um, not all teachers did it, a few teachers piloted. Uh, there's definitely some things we learned because we'd love to exercise this, um, maybe in other classes next year. But really, they learned that they need to implement some more primary source narrative reading. So some stories and writings by Americans of diverse backgrounds, um, about their experiences throughout time. The last project I wanted to highlight for you is one that's happening here at Central. And that is one through our Digital Pathways Program that you know almost all our freshmen go through. And it's really aligned with our business portion of that pathway. Guess what our students are doing? They are creating an amusement park. Doesn't that sound fun? They are learning elements of production, management, finance, accounting. They're building models of the park using 3D printers. That goes along with our digital literacy and technology goals. They're asking questions like, how many tickets do I need to sell to break even each day? They're going to be presenting, I know Dr. McBride's going to go in here, the presentations of the students. But overall, what skills are they gaining from this besides the specific business skills? They're learning skills around numeracy, reading, critical thinking, collaboration, and some great technology tools. So maybe at our next curriculum committee meeting, I can give you some visuals of these. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lori.
Question?
Oh, yes, I should have stopped. I'm like, I'm supposed to ask-
Is some of that going to be rolled into the, uh, what's it called, weapon to the real world? Reality, what is reality?
The reality world? I, this specific project, Dr. Green is here, so she is well aware of what's going on in the Digital Pathways Program. I, it, it feels kind of separate, but-
But they have to make, in real world, you have to make some of those decisions. Just something to think about.
Yeah, I, I think for sure there's practical life applications that students are learning in these programs. And I bet Tori and Chelsea are like, that sounds like a lot of fun.
Good evening. One of the things that Lori just talked about actually was the SAT and how it is online now. So most of you know that the College Board is doing everything with SAT online, including the PSAT 8-9. So that was something that I just wanted to mention because we are getting ready to test our eighth graders, which will be the class of 2028. In the past, we've brought them in on a Saturday and tested them all. That is impossible because we don't have over 900 extra devices. So what we're going to be doing this year is we have been, um, working with our feeder schools. We are actually putting a team together that will go out to each feeder school. We've developed a schedule. We'll be administering the PSAT 8-9 at their schools, so at their sites. So I really wanted to, uh, take this opportunity to say thank you. Dr. McBride has done some legwork with us with the superintendents. Dr. Christopher has been amazing in working with all the feeder schools and their principals, Dr. Osborn, Matt Dusteroff, and Doris Fleckenstein. Uh, this is a huge undertaking. It's probably going to take us about two weeks to get all of our, our incoming freshmen tested so that we can properly place them and use this as a data point. But we're very excited about this opportunity and exposing the students to this. Luann?
Do all the feeder schools have, uh, laptops or Chromebooks or whatever for the kids?
Most of them. We do have a couple of schools where we will be taking devices to them.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Earlier this evening, you heard from our representatives of student government about Homecoming Week. Our, our students are excited for Homecoming and so are we. As you heard earlier this evening, we have a number of dress-themed days each day for next week. We have a number of activities during the school day, after school, uh, throughout next week. So, um, certainly not going to repeat everything, but I do want to connect the importance of Homecoming next week to the climate and culture goal that Carrie and I have for both campuses that we are continuing this school year. At the beginning of the year, Carrie and I, we do an opening welcome video for our students at both campuses. And one of the things that we emphasize is the importance of involvement. And what we are doing this year is we continue to ensure that we are challenging our students to, to ensure that they are placed in, in classes that they are ready for. Our partnership with Equal Opportunity Schools, as you know, we're going to continue to talk about that partnership as the year involves on the academic side, but then also on the extracurricular side. That's such an important piece to the high school experience. And Carrie and I talk about the importance of getting involved. We've talked to the students. We've visited with them, um, in larger groups in the auditorium, but then also visiting some, some smaller classes as well to talk about how they can take advantage of the athletics, the activities that we have to offer. But we also talk about Homecoming Week. Because it's such a big week that where a lot of students can meet new students for the first time, they can experience in things that we have to offer for the first time. And that can just then begin more opportunities for them throughout their high school experience. So I wanted to mention Homecoming. Of course, we're excited for it. It is a rich tradition at LTHS. We do so much for our students, but also want to link it to that importance of why we say getting involved is so important. And it really does become a lasting memory for our students, um, when they graduate. Thank you.
Any questions for us?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right.
Yeah, you have there just as a piece of data, you've got the six-day count. If you want to kind of see where we're, uh, where we're at, I'm just pulling it up right here. It's just a nice, uh, we're required to do this by the state and we clocked in on the sixth day at 3,809. For those of you keeping score at home, that is almost right on the nose where Jerome McKibben said we would be. Interesting. So we're just, we've just dipped a little bit below 4,000. That's expected until about, uh, 2026. And then we'll come back up to about 4,000. So we're, we're kind of right on track, um, with that demographic projection.
All right. And we get seven overnight field trips that are there.
We did. Board members can see those in your packets. Those are just, you know, something we like to inform you. We've got student athletes and, um, uh, choir singers who are on the road. So just going to tournaments and things in, in, in other states. Just want to make sure that you're aware of those in your agenda.
Moving on to consent agenda items.
Don't, don't go, don't go past the maintenance report, Mrs. Lopez-Keneva. You know, you can see all the things, you know, uh, Lockport Township High School District 205, Maintenance Never Sleeps. You know, to- top of the line is getting all of our boilers, especially in this building, ready, uh, to roll. I took some nice pictures of them being serviced. The auditorium project is 100% complete. That great, is great. And as Mrs. Kroy mentioned, the roofing project is almost 100% complete. So that's when you begin, uh, actually paying for those projects. And that's why they're on the, the future-bound budget because we've crossed over July 1st. So we're now in the, in the new budget. You can see what some of the things we're doing, um, at, you know, athletic fields, compressors, whiteboards, furniture, um, for the port up here. The furniture for the port has always been hand-me-downs and we are going to try to do a full, um, purchase of furniture. Questions for me or Mr. Thompson?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Okay. All right. Moving to consent agenda items two to number seven. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items two through number seven?
I move to-
Oh, go ahead.
You got it, Luann.
All right. Who makes the second?
Second.
All right. Okay, it's been motioned by, uh, Ms. Johnson and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions to those? Hearing none. Roll call.
Simone Rogers?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yeah.
Navara?
Yes.
Bozma?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez-Keneva?
Yes. All right. Policy updates.
All right. This is a second reading. I can certainly pull up the, uh, slides if you would like me to. You heard about these policies last month. Most of them are very nominal, brief, brief changes.
Aye.
Aye. All right, aye. See you.